Okay, we're all set.
All right, I don't have a gavel, but today is Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. It's 11:03 a.m. and we are, the Marquette Township Board conducting a special meeting today. We are going to consider four candidates for the position of Marquette Township Manager. We do have some public and we need to have roll call, if you would please. And I'll remind everybody that we need to hear, well, if we have any motions, we'll need to hear a roll call vote. Just as a heads up, but if you want to start with, roll call, Randy?
Okay, Trustee Marks. Trustee LaRue.
Here.
Let's see, Trustee Wiegand.
Here.
Trustee Iverson.
Here.
Treasure Johnson.
Here.
Clerk Patari is here and Supervisor Durant.
Here.
Joining us also is Manager Gerard, Planner, Zoning Administrator McCarthy, Brenda Halgren, she's our Accounts Clerk. Lois Stonehouse is listening, she's our accountant. And that's it, I think Andrea Zins is on also, she's our front counter person. She's the billing clerk. And that's it.
Excellent, okay. You know what we didn't do, we have a flag, you had asked, a couple of you had asked about doing the pledge.
Not in a special meeting.
Leave it for our meetings?
Yeah, we'll do it for regular meeting.
Okay. So, public comment, I understand you have some email to read.
I do, let me log in here. Okay, public comment is from Andy Van Linden. He says, "I'd like to give a huge shout out and a big thank you of appreciation to the Water Department of Marquette Township. On Easter Sunday, we had a sewer leak at our house. Dennis and Dave came over immediately to assess the situation. They then got the wheels in motion in order to have our sewer line fixed in a very professional, in timely manner. So happy to live in the township with such professionals. Thank you, Marquette Township Water Department." And that's from Andy Van Linden.
Oh, nice, thank you for that. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, sounds good. Any comments in relation to the public comment?
Nope.
Okay, so, let's get started with, I just want to make some comments before we approve the agenda. This is a very surreal environment for us. Because you're all in your homes, you've got maybe family distractions or telephones or issues that might come up. Give me a wave if you need to get my attention or call my name. If we, if there's an emergency or if we have to stop the meeting for whatever reason, please let me know. The four candidates have asked for confidentiality, originally they weren't, so each candidate until they appear has a number. And that's how we refer to them. Now that Mark's with us, his, he's not confidential anymore. Looks like everybody's pretty much muted, excuse me, who isn't going to speak. So we remind you, if you've got a lot of background noise, you might want to use that mute button, we'd appreciate that. Okay. Just, just wanted to get that housekeeping stuff out. So I need approval of the agenda, please.
I move to approve the agenda.
Four.
All in favor? Oh, we can't do that, sorry.
Clerk Patari is yes, Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee LaRue?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Treasure Johnson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, I'm not aware of any conflicts of interest. So let's start with policy discussion, consideration and development. We have preliminary interviews of four candidates today from 11 until however long we're here, roughly five o'clock, I'm guessing. We will be taking breaks in between, hopefully if we have enough time. Excuse me. And the clerk will put up a notice on the screen saying that we are in recess for anybody who wants to join us or is looking for the meeting. So our first candidate is Mark Borden, he is on the line. And we have, just so you have an idea, Mr. Borden, we are going to do a few questions. We'll assume maybe 10 minutes or so for each, each one. Five minutes, 10 minutes, and we may have some follow-up questions. Each board member will ask you a question and hopefully we'll have some time at the end. You know, figure roughly an hour, hour fifteen minutes to, that you can ask us some questions or. So we're going to keep it structured but kind of loose, a loose format. Does that make sense, work for you?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Clear.
So everybody has their list of questions and the people who will be asking them. John, did you get the, the updated question? Did you grab that this morning? I sent a second list of questions and I reworded the first one. Did you get that, John?
No.
Okay. All right, why don't I take the first one?
Go ahead and ask the question.
And you can answer, ask the second one then, because we're just flipping. Manager Gerard suggested a little bit of a different wording. So Mark, describe your understanding of Charter Township Government and the difference from other forms of government.
Well, thank you Supervisor Durant. I, I first want to say thank you to all of you for allowing me to have this opportunity. This is a pleasure and a privilege. And I know that you all have been working hard and working for a long time now to try and find a replacement for Manager Gerard. That's, that's going to be a tough bill to fill. As you all know, you're very blessed to have Manager Randy there, Clerk Randy there. I, I've been enjoying watching your meetings and, and learning about the township. And I just, again, want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity. I do know that there are differences between Charter Townships and city, cities or villages. I, I, I'm sorry to say I don't know the specific differences. I did speak with Manager Gerard recently and we touched on that and I said, "Well, that sounds like I've got some homework to do." And I have been busy with my current job. I was hoping to research that last night, but we, I work for a group of physicians and unfortunately, our income has dwindled down to nothing. So we were meeting for a couple hours last night to decide who's getting a pay cut with our next paycheck. Not to make excuses, I, I fully intend to research the differences in, in, you know, the Charter Township versus my city manager position that I had. And I, I think it's great that Manager Gerard has offered to kind of stay on for a smooth handoff and transition. And I would fully expect to, if I'm selected for the position, to gain a lot of knowledge from him during that transition time. That may not be the answer you were hoping for, but it is completely honest and I'm being transparent. I don't have that research completed at this time and I apologize.
That's okay, I'm talking to Manager Gerard this morning, he, because he had talked to, I believe, almost all of four of you. And none of you are really aware of it, but that's important, I think, for the board to know that you don't know. So we don't, we don't always just need to know what you know, it's what you don't know too.
And I, sorry, I'm looking down, I'm taking some notes as we go.
Absolutely. I was negligent too in giving you an opportunity to speak first, I'm very sorry for that. So if you want to give us a little heads up about Mark, whatever you want to share for a few minutes, that would be helpful.
Okay, well, I, you know, I thought about this earlier and even last week when I realized I would be a finalist. And I can, I can offer the two-minute elevator version or a little more in depth. And I think, I don't, I don't think I'll go back 50-plus years and start there, but I might go back 31 years. In 1988 is when I married my wife Susan. We met in Grand Rapids. I came up from Florida to attend the Grand Rapids School of the Bible and Music in hopes of pursuing a career in missionary aviation. And that's where I met my wife Susan. We were married a year later. I went back to Florida, finished up my undergraduate degree, didn't complete the program there. They, for financial reasons, that school is pretty much closed down. They partnered with Cornerstone University in Grand Rapids and there's still a flight division in Ionia, Michigan. And our son is, has been accepted for maintenance, aircraft maintenance there next year, so we're excited about that. That's how I ended up in Michigan, pretty much raised in Florida and no experience with municipal management of any sort. When we moved to Michigan, we, I'm sorry, went back to Florida for about 18 years. I moved up here in 87, we got married, finished my undergrad at Clearwater Christian College. And we moved here to Michigan permanently in 2007. And we're in the Lower Peninsula Carson City area, about an hour north of Lansing. We were married in 88 and we have two sons, one's 21 and one is 19 and they're here with us now. We certainly weren't expecting to have them here this time of year. They're both at Waterlife Bible Institute out in New York, in the Adirondacks, a beautiful part of the country. It's the one or two-year program out there and they're both going through the two-year program. But they're here now and I was kind of hoping they're doing their college work today. And I thought, I hope they're not using up all my hand with so that I can be on this interview, but so far, so good. As far as career, since we got married, I did, I've been involved in anesthesia billing and practice management for over 15 years. That started in Florida. I did have my own business for about five years, five or six, with up to 15 to 18 employees at one time. And then we got some offers to acquire the business. I wasn't looking to sell, but it just seemed like an opportunity. And that's when we decided to sell our business and move to Michigan. And we moved in next door to my in-laws here in Carson City. So we've had a chance to raise our boys here in Carson City. And they were able to ride bikes or golf carts or what have you over, over to see grandma and grandpa anytime they wanted. So it's been a great opportunity. We came up here about the time of the real estate crash and we hadn't sold our house in Florida. So that was a little bit of a financial burden, but I didn't have a job lined up. I fully expected to work in Lansing or Grand Rapids in anesthesia billing, that was kind of my thought. And about six months after we were here, they, the opening came for the manager position in Carson City. And the mayor approached me and said, "I think you should apply." And I said, "I don't have any experience with that." He said, "Listen, you, you've gone to the police academy, you've owned your own business, you've been in construction, you've worked for an engineer. You know, you have a lot of the pieces that we'd be looking for." And I had local ties to the community and that was important to them, I feel. Thirty-two applicants applied for the position and I was thankfully selected for the position. And was able to serve there for six years as city manager and, and learned quite a bit. Was able to use my business background along with formal education to, to help the city and, and provide information for the council. So they could set policy and then I could carry out the policy with the, the rest of the staff there. And it was a great situation. About six years into my tenure there, an opportunity presented itself out in Pennsylvania at a private Bible college. And it just seemed like a great opportunity and we did move out east. And this was shortly after my mother passed away. And not to get too personal, but it kind of speaks to my job history and I mentioned that in my cover letter. We took the job in Pennsylvania, the, the private college was in financial distress. And I told them for an entire year that they needed to remove staff in order to stay afloat. And at the end of the first school year there, they finally took me seriously and they, they eliminated about 20% of the positions there at the college/university. And, and mine was one of those positions. That sort of began a revolving door, if you will, for opportunities for me. My father was no longer driving and I was, as an only child, had full care for my father who was elderly. And we were able to move back to Michigan and I ended up in Ann Arbor working for an anesthesia company in charge of their billing office, about 35 employees. And I was, lived with my father for two years in Ann Arbor to care for him and then another couple of years before he passed last year. The, I'll talk about my recent jobs. The job in Ann Arbor was, was great. They, they were acquired by a national company and I still had a position with them, but it wasn't clear as to the future. And when another opportunity presented itself, I, I was able to move on. And then that, that group restructured a year later. And I was a casualty of that restructuring, even though the president, the physician, anesthesiologist called me six months later and thanked me wholeheartedly for my efforts in showing them that they were losing about $4 million a year revenue from the inefficiencies with their billing company. They, the crazy thing is, they hired the senior vice president from their former billing company to take my spot. And they ended up getting rid of that billing company and getting rid of her. So that, that was kind of interesting, but I was happy to, to be offered a position with my current group, not quite a year ago. And, and knew some of them from years ago. And this is going really well, it's a wonderful opportunity. But with COVID and some other organizational changes that our group is probably going to make in May, my position along with the rest of the billing staff will be either eliminated or shifted over to the hospital. And that, that began my search once again for an opportunity in municipal management. And I've been looking at the Michigan Municipal League website and some other government websites for opportunities. I, you know, we would like to stay in Michigan, so this, this seemed like a wonderful opportunity, especially after I had a chance to talk to Frank and sit in on some of your council meetings and, or, and/or listen to the council meetings. So I apologize for rambling, that's not the elevator version, but that's, that's me. And I, one time I had a job interview and my wife said, "Well, don't try to be funny because you're not." And I did think of something this morning when I was getting dressed for this meeting. I thought, "This is the first time in over 50 years that I literally have been all dressed up with nowhere to go." But I, I thought I would share that. I, I do appreciate the opportunity and I'm happy to put a suit on, even if it's to sit in front of a computer screen and meet with you all. I feel like I know you because I've watched so many of the meetings. It's been enjoyable, we have a wonderful situation there, thanks to all of you and Manager Randy and the other staff. And I, it's certainly not a situation where anyone would need to come in and change anything, in my opinion. So I'm, I'm happy again to have the opportunity and I'll be quiet now.
That was good, no, that was fine. Yeah, I brushed my teeth and put on my perfume too and I don't know why. Habit. Sir.
Yep.
I just wanted to tell you that the question that you asked was the one that I would have asked had I been just asked to ask the question. It was a good one to ask, we got great answers and we got very honest and sincere response. But I just want you to know that you could, I, I couldn't have asked for a different kind of a question than the one you asked.
Oh, thank you.
But you can count that as my question.
No, that's all right, why don't you go ahead and ask the second one of Mark? Go ahead and ask question two.
Well, pardon me.
Go ahead, answer, ask question two.
I don't have question two.
Well, that's all right, we switched them. Okay, I'll, I'll answer, ask that one. Mark, the board has adopted policy governance. Describe your understanding of it and how the manager's position relates to the board.
Thank you Supervisor Durant. I, I would equate your situation to be very similar to my position when I was manager in Carson City. The, the board, and in my case, it was the council, absolutely sets policy. And I feel that it's my duty, and it is, to carry out that policy in, in conjunction with the rest of the staff there in the Charter Township. I, that's not a 10-minute answer, but you know, perhaps there's a follow-up to that question, if you'd like to follow up with that. But you know, the, the board sets policy and I help carry it out. My job would also be to do research in conjunction with the, the rest of the staff to provide the board with information so that they can make good decisions on setting policy. That would also be my responsibility to help inform the board to make those good decisions.
Okay, that sounds fine. Okay, Ernie, you want to ask number three?
Okay, the question I have, this is Ernie, Ernie, Treasure of the Township. What have you learned about Marquette Township? And what would your, what would your recommendation, recommended direction be for the rest of this year? And then in general to the next five years?
Well, thank you Treasure Johnson. I, you know, we all have to think about our current situation with COVID. I saw for my current job, something came through from a CPA firm that said, "Well, you can just throw your 2020 budget out the window." And I think, you know, we could all agree to that. Manager Gerard and I talked about the, you know, the revenue from the, from the retail stores and, and the situation there and what that might look like in Marquette Charter Township going forward. Certainly, we all are hoping for a full recovery, but we don't know what that's going to look like. So I would say the immediate challenges will be the finances and you've already started on that. You're ahead of the curve, you're, you know, it's, as with everything that you do there, you're proactive more than reactive. And I think even your DPW superintendent spoke to that when he, when he addressed the board here recently. But the five-year plan is probably going to have to be revisited, some things, some projects. And you've already talked about that in some of your meetings, some of those are, are going to have to be put on hold, they might have to be reduced. Kind of a necessary projects will come to the forefront and some of those back burner projects may have to be pushed down the road a little bit. It, it's really going to be about finances, I think, and, and trying to determine the revenue stream for the, the Charter Township, especially in the next two years. You know, we don't know the long-term effects of, of the coronavirus. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. Pete, you've got question four?
My name is Pete LaRue, board member. And what is your knowledge and concept of dark stores? Speak to the impact it had on our township. Are you aware of the dark store issue and has it affected you at all in any of your businesses?
Thank you, Trustee LaRue. I, I'm a little bit aware from watching, from watching your meetings. It has not affected my business or our business here, per se. But you know, it sounds like it has had a financial impact on you all. And I, that's another area of research that I would certainly have to do to become familiar with that and I apologize. And I think that's one of the concerns that potentially Frank Walsh had. Not a concern, I shouldn't say that, but I have not been actively day-to-day involved in municipal management and shouldering with other managers in the, in Lansing like I did back when I was with Carson City. So I, I do have a little bit of a learning curve and I am going to race to get up to speed if I'm, you know, offered the position, certainly. Again, that's not the answer I wanted to provide and I just have to be perfectly honest with you and I'm sorry. I, I have had an opportunity over the years, I've had many different careers, some of them are not on my resume. I was a letter carrier at age 24 and that was a wonderful job. I left that job to, to come up here to Michigan. I just have had an opportunity to learn a lot of things in my lifetime and I feel like that is one of my strengths is to be able to learn something and take on new, new tasks and responsibilities in, in pretty short order. Especially if I put my mind to it, I can, I can do that. I, I did get my private pilot's license back in 1988 as part of the aviation program. And I've been through a formal education, undergraduate and graduate degrees. So I, I just feel like I'm able to learn these things pretty quickly, especially with, with the team you have there that can help me and, and you all as well. Years ago, I was a proud man and somebody would offer help and I would say, "I don't need it." But I don't, I was just dumb, I think, because now if somebody offers to help, I will absolutely accept their offer. And you know, this is, this is kind of part of the interview where I'm supposed to tell you how wonderful I am, yet convince you how humble I am. And there's kind of a balance there. But I am very transparent, I will absolutely tell somebody when I don't know something and ask for help and work hard to be able to get the understanding that I need to do the best job I can for you and, and my colleagues, my coworkers.
It's a big issue with us because it sort of started up in Illinois, then Marquette Township has experienced it. It's just crazy and 2013, I had dug out some old stuff and made a difference in our tax revenue of $641,579.
Yeah, wow.
Here you are, you're budgeting and all of a sudden, and it's growing, it's growing more and more. It was hard to get support to fight it and it's very important to us because we're a growing community. And some of the bigger stores, they start filing for dark stores, apartment complexes and construction companies. And, and here we want to offer a lot of services to our, and you get that dark store thing. I just kind of wonder if you're ever exposed to it, so it's not a good thing, so thank you for your answer.
Thank you.
Okay, number five, Dan?
Yes, good morning, Mark, my name is Dan Iverson. My question is, the board began the process of a, of new strategic plan that was waylaid by the coronavirus. What are your, what would your steps be to get us back to the finish line?
Good morning, Trustee Iverson, thank you for the question. I, my, my focus, my, I've been in operations for many, many years, but I've always had an eye for the financial side of the operations. And I would tell you that I'm a frustrated accountant at heart. I took Accounting, Principles of Accounting, one and two in, in summer school. And that was a big mistake because it was two hours of class every day, five days a week and four hours of homework, journal entry and everything else. And it, it kind of spoiled me or soiled me on, on pursuing a CPA degree and becoming an accountant. But I, I've always managed the financial side of things and that would be, in conjunction with the team there. That would be my goal, is to really get a good handle on the forecast, the revenue forecast and, and restructure the, you know, the five-year master plan based on the new, the new revenue streams, the new anticipated revenue streams. Certainly, and, and again, thanks to Manager Gerard for willing to, being willing to stay on and, and help with some of these things. And also, I would hope in the future, no more than a phone call away to kind of pick his brain on some of these sorts of things. But it, it really is all going to come down to finances and trying to determine what the new normal is. You know, I don't know when everything will, will finally reset, none of us know that. So we have to be proactive during that time and, and be cautious with our spending, not knowing if we'll have those future revenue streams. It's a scary time for all of us, you know, I, we talk, we see that my boss is an anesthesiologist. He's in the naval reserves. He was called to, called up. And he's at, in New York City at one of the worst hospitals. He doesn't know how long he's going to be there. It's, it's a real, you know, it's a serious battle that he's fighting every day, intubating patients and managing their airways and, and using the ventilators. So we just, you know, he said, I don't know when this is going to end. We haven't really seen it here in Michigan like he's been exposed to out there in New York. But it's affecting our business. You know, we have, none of the elective cases can go on right now. Hip replacements, joint replacements, even, even, you know, some, some very necessary things, I feel. And, and our group is, and, and hospitals are, are closing or closing whole wings and wards. And we need medical help, but yet we're laying people off. So it's, it's really, these are unknown times, as you know. I'm not telling you any, any of you anything you don't know. But it would just be, we really need to be keeping our eye on the finances, which you all have done over the years. But we need to reset at some point, figure out what that reset is. Thank you.
Thank you. And it's going to definitely be some tough times ahead.
Okay, thanks. Number six, Randy?
Hi Mark, this is Clerk Randy Retary. Question six is, what steps have you taken in your previous occupations to build an atmosphere of teamwork, especially among different departments?
Sure, thank you Clerk Retary. I appreciate the question. I, I'm very collaborative. I, when I started my business, I was much younger. And I, I knew, I felt like I knew all areas of the business. And I thought it was my way or the highway. These were my employees. And by golly, I was going to tell them what to do and they were going to do it. And I learned it about less than two weeks. If I continued on this path, that none of us were going to have a job. I wouldn't have any clients and any of the money that I had invested would have gone right out the window. That was a pretty valuable lesson. I was blessed to have an office manager. I call her my third mother. I was adopted at birth. I have my adopted mom, my birth mom, and, and my third mother, the office manager, we still keep in touch. You know, she, she was very helpful in helping me to understand that I just need to empower my staff and give them the tools they need to do the job that they want to do. Because people do want to do a good job and not just for a paycheck. You know, we see it in the news nowadays, how people want to get back to work, how fulfilling it is. People want to be successful and you just need to empower them to be successful. And I just, you know, I, I give people the tools and kind of get out of the way. And I certainly do not micromanage. I absolutely don't even like that term. But you know, I, I don't hover. I'm, I'm ever-present and available. I want to know what everybody's working on so that I can, I can offer help or advice if needed. But I, and you know, and to be able to report to the public as well, the different projects that are going on. But I, as far as team building, you know, we, in my, in my job in Ann Arbor, when I was there for a couple of years, we did some team building events with the different departments and even with all the employees. We had, you know, a bowling outing and, and some different things like that. And certainly never wanted to break the budget. But we would just simple things like, you know, a potluck and have people bring in food and share a meal. And instead of all being in our little cubicles at lunchtime, you know, we would, we would come together and build that camaraderie. And I think with any business, communication is the key. I absolutely have an open door anywhere I've worked. And anyone, anywhere up and down the chain can come in and, and meet with me at any time. There, there were times when I was in Carson City when I didn't get anything done the whole morning. Because, well, I shouldn't say that. I got a lot done because different council members were coming in to meet with me. And that's important. We were all communicating what was going on out in the community. And if they wanted to come in and tell me, you know, where we had a pothole, that was fine. And you know, if we could address it that day, we would. But I, I would just say communication is absolutely the key. And you know, some people are, are acceptable that more than others. But we all need to know what's going on with each other. And, and these Zoom meetings are great. You know, we've done, I now go to Sunday School every Sunday and, and Zoom with my Sunday School class and, and keep in communication with them. And it's important, you know, especially at this time when we're all so isolated. So I, hopefully I've answered your question in, in clearly. And thank you for the question.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, Dave, number seven?
Yeah, my name is Dave Wigan. I'm a trustee. And realizing that our residents are stockholders and stakeholders, how would you keep them informed and educated, engaged in their input?
Well, thank you trustee Wigan. I, I'm not a big social media guy, but I have always worked with people that are. So I, I don't know how much of that the Charter Township is involved with. But I will say, and I don't know if you had a chance to read my, my cover letter, I'm sure you probably did, that the customer service is absolutely number one in any business. You know, whether it's, you know, I've been involved in plumbing and, and working with physicians and private Bible colleges and city manager and, you know, potentially, I'm selected Charter Township manager. And I attended a seminar once and it was, the first question they, it was an HR seminar. And the first question they asked was, well, who are your customers? And this was when I was working for a physician group. So some of the audience responded, well, our patients are our customers. And the, the lecturer went on to share with us that it's not just our patients. It's not just our residents that pay our, you know, pay taxes and pay salaries for the, the township staff, if you will. It's everyone we come in contact, whether they're a resident of the township, if they're resident of the city of Marquette. It's everyone we come in contact with. I, I'm not really answering your question about how would you communicate. I don't, I don't have a plan at this point for how to communicate. You know, certainly website is, is one thing to do. I would want to be kind of, well, not omnipresent, but very present in the, in the township and very available to the community, the business owners, any of the residents. Again, I would not be someone that would be in the office with the door closed. And I think manager Gerard has, has been that as well. And that's what your residents are used to over the years. So I would want to continue that. I don't know if we want to launch, you know, a public campaign dealing with post-COVID issues, if you will. You know, that might be a good helpful bit of information to say, well, here's what's going on at the township. You've got things on your website that kind of already addressed that. That, that is a wonderful tool. But thank you. I think I've answered it somewhat.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
So my final question is, why should we hire you over the other candidates?
Thank you Supervisor Durant. Yeah, this is, this is the part again where I have to brag about myself and convince you that I'm humble. I just, I feel like I, I'm a little, I, I have no idea how old the other candidates are. I just know that I have a lifetime of experience behind me. I, I, I've had two kind of successful career paths in, in my mind. One has been the anesthesia opportunities that I've had. But unfortunately, those seem to be the revolving door with all the mergers, acquisitions and, and corporate takeovers. And throw COVID on top of that. And it's just, you know, like, I would appreciate getting involved again in municipal management. It, it's just a better sense of security and, and longevity. And you know, I, I feel that I could have, could have stayed at Carson City until the day I retired. And I, I chose to leave and I have questioned that decision more than once. But you asked me why you should hire me over the other candidates. I feel like I do have a lifetime of experience and the others do as well. I, I have six years with the city of Carson City, and that was a wonderful experience. And I was heavily involved in, in the utility side of things, the asset management. Sounds like you have some great things going on there. And Superintendent Kanga says, has a wonderful background, engineering and, you know, all the things that I would want to see for the township with the asset management, the, the pay, your ratings, all the, all the wonderful things that you're doing. I've got that background. So six years hands-on municipal experience. And combined with the other opportunities that I've had for operational oversight and management, with a heavy emphasis on finances. And you know, I'm just, I'm not afraid to roll up my sleeves and, and work hard. The, the job's not done until the job's done. I, I would be happy to jump on a mower or drive a plow truck or what, you know, whatever needs to be done to get the job done. That, that may not ever happen. But when I was in Carson City, if they needed another man, had a water main break and they needed a man to either, you know, watch the, the ditches or jump down in the ditch and grab a shovel and help out, I wasn't afraid to do that. And I just, I'm willing to jump in wherever needed. And I, I care a lot about the organization for which I'm employed. And it's a lot more than that when you're municipal manager. You're involved in the community. You're a part of the community. And it, you know, if you, I'm a part of my organization right now, but I'm not in the operating rooms. I'm not clinical at all. I'm just, you know, on the administrative side. But I just feel like with my background and some of the things I've done. And I would say that my strength is my people skills. I am, I've been able to work with all kinds of people in all walks of life and very successfully and, and able to kind of reach a consensus through just about everything that I've, that I've put my hand to. So I feel like I'd be a good fit for the position. I, I again was thankful to have a chance to talk with manager Gerard. And in, in looking at what you've got going on there, I feel like I can come right in and, and be a good fit. Now, I do have a little bit of learning to do on some of the differences in the, in the, how things are run in a Charter Township versus a municipality and, and some other things that we've talked about. But I just, my two strengths are people skills and problem solving. And you, you've got a great team there, including you all, to help with the problem solving. And like we talked about, the, the big problem going forward is going to be finances. So we just, you know, that would be not a problem, but a concern that needs to be addressed. And I, I will leave it at that. But thank you for the question.
Okay, so do you have any questions for us? And I want to give the board an opportunity to do some follow-ups. But do you have any questions for us?
No, I did ask Mr. Walsh, I think, in an email and also maybe talk to manager Gerard about how soon you would want to get somebody in place there. I know we all wish we could meet face-to-face in the same room today. And maybe on May 16th, that can happen. We don't know what the governor might say. But I know that Randy's contract is through the end of May. And I didn't know if you were trying to get somebody in place there by the end of May. It's been a long process. I know you had somebody close back in January and that, that didn't go through. Just wondered about the timeline of, of how things might play out. This would be one question.
Um, well, we can, anybody can chime in, but I would think most places you have to give two weeks to a month notice with your previous employer or current employer. So I think the board is kind of thinking at least 30 days.
Sure.
I would think that they would have wished for 60 days ago. Some of the, some of the things that the manager was planning have kind of been put on hold. So he had his, his summer set and we were kind of trying to accommodate that too, to get somebody in place before, before his plans hit. But he's been great about being flexible and staying almost as long as we need him. I'm not putting your words in your mouth, Randy, but, so if anybody else wants to comment on that? Okay.
Well, thank you. I, you know, I might follow up with a little bit of a reply on that. My, I don't know what my contract says for notice. I, I think it's only two weeks. I, normally it'd be 30 days in my position. But our situation is so fluid right now and it, it's changing every day. And I'm, there's a, I can't talk a lot about the situation with my group. There's a non-disclosure agreement in place with, with what they're doing. But I think I can talk in general terms that something is going to happen in May. And there will still be a corporation. And it, it's the kind of thing where I could probably stay on until the end of the year to help them wind things down. And that would, in short order, become not a full-time job. I would say that I could be available rather quickly. And I'm not trying to get the cart before the horse. But I could be involved in Marquette Charter Township and still, you know, in the evenings, help with some of the things that, that will need to be done with, with my business. I, I think my boss would fully support, you know, a move. So I would say two weeks is, would be all that would be required. And I guess I'll leave it at that. I wish I could say more, but.
It's okay.
You know, it's the kind of thing, and my boss would agree. Yes, they would, they would keep me around for as long as possible. We'll still have some other facilities where we provide anesthesia services. So there's a remnant of my corporation that will carry on forever. But certainly not enough to require the office staff and administrator or a group of 50-plus employees. You know, that's, if it happens, that's going to go right down to about 10 employees. So you can see the, kind of the difference there in the organizational, excuse me, structure. But anyway, I, you know, could easily start by the end of May.
Okay, that's important to know. So how about any follow-ups, board members?
I do.
Sure, go ahead, John.
Uh, this is John Marks, trustee. We have, Mark, an extremely capable staff leadership group. We have our assessor, our Department of Public Works and our planner. All are leadership quality people within the township. How do you feel about us encouraging a staff leadership committee meeting, at least with the manager, once a month?
Oh, thank you trustee Marks. No, that's, I would expect that that would happen. I, now, this is really corny, but when I, when I've gone in new roles and I've been hired as a manager or executive director, whatever the position was, I have something that I call a moment with Mark. And it, it sounds corny, but it's a 15 to 30-minute, one-on-one. Obviously, the department heads, I'm going to spend more time with them. We're going to go to lunch. We're going to do a lot of things. But every employee in the, in the organization and even volunteer firefighters, anyone that'll spend the time with me, I will sit down with them and, you know, ask them about personal questions, whatever, whatever questions I, I can legally ask or whatever they're willing to share. But I want to get to know people. You know, I'm going to spend a lot of time with these people and I want to get to know them outside of work. Not just during the workday, but you know, we're potentially, people's lives are at stake. You're depending on one another for, for your livelihood and, and to protect one another and provide for one another. So yes, we would, I would think, have meetings potentially months, once a week. I would think have meetings, um, potentially months, once a week and and a minimum once a month. But again, that goes back to my earlier statement about how important communication is.
Thank you, Mark.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody else? Sure. Clerk Critari.
Hi, Mark. This is Clerk Critari. I have a question. We have a small, smaller staff here. How is your, how would you look at positions and any cross-training for any vacancies or any if someone gets sick? How would we, you know, cover that position if they were out? Cause we're a small group here and we don't have much backup for our staff. So how would you handle things like that?
Sure. You know, I I'm not going to be your accountant, but I would even want to learn the various positions. When I was at City of Carson City as the manager, you know, I was able to take any resident calls, take, um, you know, people came in to pay their utility bills. I could process their payments and and we had some cross-training there. Clerk and Treasurer could kind of cover for one another. Certainly there are delineations of duty that would fall under one person and not another, just by the way that, of structure, but no, I, I think cross-training is, is wonderful and necessary and, and I would kind of put in a, a policy that that should happen and would happen. And I wouldn't want to facilitate that. And again, not to, not to hover over anyone or micromanage, but I would want to learn all those positions over time enough to at least get on a phone call with somebody and give them the information they were looking for if someone was out sick. And certainly no, I would learn the software for the utility and the taxes and be able to answer questions if, if residents called in and had a question about their utility bill or their tax bill. No, I think that's important and that's a great question. And I would hope that the staff would be, would be open to that, you know, you need to be able to to cover for one another for vacations and I get frustrated with my current job because you know, we're, we're down a doctor or a nurse and esnotist and, you know, as, as much as I want to help, I'm not qualified and you wouldn't want me in there, you know? But in a situation like this, if there are areas where I can help, I would want to and I think the staff would, would appreciate that cross-training. You know, it's, it's a great learning process as well.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Thank you for that answer.
Sure. Thank you.
Anybody else? Dan.
I've just got one other question. How do you feel about doing yearly evaluations on your, on your workers, you know, so they know what they're doing, both good and bad?
No, I thank you, Trustee Eversen. I, I think they're necessary and any, any HR involvement that I've had, you know, they've any organization where I've been and they didn't have that process in place, it was encouraged that we begin that process and continue that process. And I I think you already have that process in place there. It's important, but you know what? So it would take place and that it certainly needs to take place, but I would hope that when we got to that yearly evaluation, that particular employee or staff member would absolutely know what that evaluation was going to look like because we've had communication throughout the year and addressed any issues. You know, throughout the year and I would, I would, if either formally or informally, I would want to meet, excuse me, one-on-one with my direct reports once a week, just to check in, you know, 15 minutes. Some of them might hate that. Some of them might look forward to that, you know, hey, I get a chance to tell the manager what's going on. This is my 15 minutes to unload, but I would, I would want to meet once a week with them, but I, I would also be meeting with them daily as I'm circulating and, and you know, there at the in the office or out in the field or wherever I am, you know, I'm going to know what's going on and yes, we'll have the yearly evaluations, but we'll already know kind of where that, what that's going to look like when that evaluation takes place.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else?
Lynn.
Pete, go ahead.
Uh, Pete LaRue here. Uh, have you dealt very much with unions, like contracts and stuff like that? Oh, okay.
Thank you, Trustee LaRue. Uh, again, the full honesty and transparency. I have not had the pleasure of dealing with union negotiations. I have been involved in a lot of employment negotiations and I handle all that now for my physician group with doctors, nurse and esnotists and, and billing staff. And in different positions I've had, I've been involved with labor negotiations, but never formally with the union.
Well, thank.
Yeah, that's, that would be another little bit of a learning curve and I could get up to speed pretty quickly on that. My involvement, I was a union employee, I guess, at the post office years ago. And long before that, when I was a plumber's helper, we were working on a commercial project in Englewood, Florida. We had some, we had some non-union plumbers and some union plumbers and it was, it was interesting to see the, kind of the difference there. But that's been my only true life exposure to, to unions. I know that in Carson City it was talked about, but it never came to fruition for the public works guys. So I, you know, I apologize that I haven't had any hands-on experience, but certainly willing to learn and I, I would think Attorney Zappa has a good handle on, on the labor negotiations or maybe you have an HR labor law attorney that you use as well, but I think it's great that you involve Attorney Zappa in your, in all your meetings so that he, he knows, again, communication. You know, he doesn't have to hear secondhand what's going on. He's there and and he can hear it firsthand and he can address it right at the time rather than a month later or two weeks later. So that's, that's my short answer that was rather long.
Well, we have, I think we have a pretty good relationship with our union. You know, like you say, there, we all have to work together. So, you know, make successful a township. Cause we've got a lot going on. It's very, it's one of the fastest growing townships around. So and we can't do it alone. You realize that just much as we do. We can't do everything ourselves. So we have a lot of things. So and we have a good staff. We have a good union members and it's almost like a big family. So we're proud of it. We're proud of them. Thank you.
Yeah, as you should be. Everything is in tip-top shape there.
Any other questions? Okay. Any closing remarks, Mark?
I, I was going to tell Trustee Eversen that I'll give you $2 for that easement. I'll double the price. If you have a concern about them paying a dollar for that easement. And I should have listened to my wife's advice. Don't try to be funny because you're not. You know, I just, I, I have enjoyed watching your, your meetings and your videos. It's kind of gotten my blood going again. Thinking back to the meetings that we had in Carson City and you know, I read the paper here locally. I'm involved with our, our county administration and the things they've got going on over there and my neighbor is the township supervisor here in our local township, but you know, I, I kind of got addicted to these videos. It's, it's a weird sensation, but I appreciate Clerk Critari's efforts to put all these things on, you know, out there and that, you know, just to be able to pull up documents and and, uh, you know, do that kind of thing during the Zoom meetings. That, that is so helpful to me. Uh, the public can join in and, and it's really been a, a pleasure to watch these meetings and get to know all of you and and I appreciate the opportunity to, for the interview. So thank you. And my offer still stands. I'll double the price. I don't know what I'll do with it, but I'll.
We work together quite well.
Yeah.
And Dan's still trying to figure out when he goes to bank with the mask on, if he should ask for money or give money.
I almost, I almost put it on. I almost put it on.
My wife and I have two sons. They're two years apart. And one is a saver and one is a spender. And that became ever so clear to me once we went to the credit union when we were out in Pennsylvania. And sure enough, one of them was putting money in and one of them was taking money out. And it's, it's been that way since day one. Kind of interesting.
That's why you always have a couple of kids.
Sure. Yeah. Well, thank you, everyone. I've, I've enjoyed it. I was, uh, you know, nervous before the interview and certainly didn't think of all the right questions that you might ask. So I was not as prepared as I would have liked to have been, but I have my homework now and I appreciate it and I know you've got a long day, so I will, uh, sign off here shortly, but I appreciate your time and I'm sure the other candidates do as well. I don't, I guess the other question is I did ask when you want to get somebody started if possible. I don't, maybe Frank already addressed this, the, the follow-up to today and then uh, future meetings or interviews. Do you have any timeline for those?
Not really a timeline. We're not sure. I've had multiple board members ask me if we were going to meet any or all or one of the candidates in person and have a follow-up. So I think we're going to just kind of see how this plays out. If the board feels they can get enough information from this setting today to either call one or two back or make a decision. No, there's seven of us that have to have input. So there's really no, we don't have anything locked down yet. Cause this, you know, while we went through that first setting of interviews, that was, it might've even been new for some people to interview a prospective employee, you know, where some of us have done that before, some haven't. So this throws it into another notch of, of surrealism and, you know, we're just kind of going one step at a time. So yeah, timeline, we don't have, we haven't really decided what happens next. I'm thinking down to one or two, probably an interview and maybe a second time.
Okay.
Yes, but.
All right. Well, that's fair. I, um, you know, if the governor does lift the restrictions on the 15th, I, I would be happy to come up there shortly after that. If you all are going to meet again in a, in a common room. It'd be great to meet the staff, you know, they, they won't ultimately be making a decision, but they certainly will have some, some thoughts on who the next manager might be. But I, if that works out, I'm more than willing to come up and meet in person. That would be ideal.
Okay.
Mark, how much do you know about our township?
More than I did three weeks ago and not as much as I should.
That's the answer. I didn't know if you're, you know, if you know anything about it or what. So I just got to curious.
No, just, thank you though. I, just from what I've, uh, read online and, and you know, these, these meetings, these recent meetings that I've attended virtually is kind of what I know. But I of course read the history and, and that sort of thing. And would, anyway, it's, it's hard to know how, you know, I wanted to be prepared for this meeting, but how, you know, what do you, it's like getting prepared for, uh, for Jeopardy or something. What, what do you study and, you know, what answers are you, try and make sure you know when the questions come out. But I, uh, reading more and more every day. I, every day I watch a video or two or listen to one, the ones that are audio only. So I, you know, I did ask Manager Gerard, I said, hey, what'd that Jeep end up going for that you had auctioned for, you know, $500 minimum bid? I was just curious that I didn't, I hadn't seen the answer on that, but he did tell me a little history on that. So it's, I am getting, I'm getting all the township.
Yeah, we're, we're proud of what we accomplished. We've accomplished a lot in the last, you know, 10 years and like I say, it's a very nice township to deal with.
Oh, it sure is. I, um, yeah, I, I've been exposed to some others, you know, and you all are doing it right and I, I'd love to be a part of that and keep that going. If given the opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Mark.
Sure.
Sounds like a perfect way to end.
Yeah. You need a little bit of time before your next candidate. I'm sorry. We ran a little bit over an hour.
No, that's fine.
Thank you very much. I'm glad the internet all worked and thank you Clerk Critari for your efforts along those lines and everything else that you do. Very helpful. Thank you.
Welcome, Mark.
Thanks for participating. We sure appreciate it.
Okay. Wonderful. Well, have a good rest of the day.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
You want to put us on hold, Clerk Critari?
Yeah, Lynn, why don't the board members and the staff that are connected just stay where you're at and I will mute myself and put that posting up that will be in recess until 12:30.
Okay. And I'm going to leave the meeting now.
Okay, thank you.
Very much.
And why don't you guys come back about 12:25 then? So.
All right.
Sounds good.
Pete, are you, are you got lunch for us yet?
Yeah, I'm looking at the green, green bananas and peanut butter.
Sounds good, actually.
Yeah. If they were ripe bananas.
In what order?
I'll put it in the microwave for you, Dan. Now, are we live now?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, the video, the audio is going to stay on while we're, oh, 12:30?
Just amongst ourselves, I think.
Okay. And the next one is number 13, eh?
We are interviewing manager candidates today, Marquette Township. And our next candidate is Patrick Regan. Is it Reagan or Reagan? How do you pronounce it?
Reagan, just like the farmer.
Reagan, just like the former president.
Reagan, okay. Sounds good. Um, we're going to figure about an hour, Patrick, for the meeting, for the interview. We, we have a list of questions, five, 10 minutes for each one. We'll go through that and then allow the board to have some follow ups afterward. And hopefully, if you have some questions, we can cover those and get some answers for you. So are we ready to start, board? Everybody look. Okay, Patrick, why don't you start by telling us a little something about you? The board has got all of your applicant information, but whatever else you want to share with us would be great.
Sure, um, well, I, first of all, thank you all for this opportunity. I've been looking forward to it for a while now. I'll tell you something that, that you may not know about me. I'm an avid golfer and also a terrible golfer. I absolutely off limits to sport. I don't know why I play it, but it's one thing that I enjoy doing in my time, not at work and not with family. So I, I'm, I'm, just a little bit more about me. As you can see, I've worked in the, in the Upper Peninsula. I was a manager over in Crystal Falls, but before that, I don't think it was on my resume because you try to keep it to three jobs. I was also a DDA director in Iron Mountain, right out of grad school. Come to, come to enjoy the Upper Peninsula. My family down here is basically not down here anymore. They're all throughout the United States. I fell in love with a, with a fine woman from Hermansville, Michigan. If anybody knows where Hermansville is at.
They all do.
And we've, we've decided to, to make a life together. And it's been made awfully clear to me that that life will not be down here, which is fine by me. My friends are in the UP. I'm looking forward to the opportunity to be able to get back there.
Okay, excuse me. Um.
Lynn?
Go ahead, John, you can.
Ask that first question?
Sure, go ahead.
Patrick, in the Upper Peninsula, we have townships, as you know. And what we would like to know is, we'd like you to explain, if you can, what's your concept of the difference between a regular township and a charter township? If you could, give us some input.
Sure, basically, as I see it, a regular township is, was formed under the township system through the state very long time ago, at the beginning of the state. A regular township, basically, elections and assessing. Whereas a charter township is closer to a village, a city, provides more services, is more, is just more like a city than your typical township. For example, we have, out here, I have Odessa Township, just outside of Lake Odessa. And they're, they're your, your standard township. Elections, assessing, no, no real full time staff except for a cemetery, sexton. More service provision in a charter township. More day to day operations, usually has professional management as well, as well as a pretty heavy staff, like a village or a city would have.
A follow up to that, could you kind of compare that then to city government, maybe?
I think they're, sure, I think that they're, they're very, very similar. From just what I've known, I've had friends that are managers in charter townships, and they seem to be relatively similar to cities. Like I said, service provision is the number one, whereas a lot of townships, you know, the county handles it. The county handles the policing, they handle almost everything. You know, it's left to somebody else. It's a very loose conglomeration of folks, whereas a charter is, is more put together and more professional. Again, like I'd say, you provide water, wastewater and solid waste pickup. All things that I've dealt with in other communities. Here, we don't have the wastewater. We have a wastewater authority. It's the village and three townships that go together. So, but like I said, in Crystal Falls, we had the full complement as well as an electric department that we ran. So I'm very comfortable with service provision, with working with customers and residents and staff. And that's a lot, very similar to, makes that charter township similar to a city or a village.
Okay, thanks. Question two is, the board has adopted policy governance. Describe your understanding of it and how the manager's position relates to the board.
Well, sure, um, I, well, right now, just tell you in, in, in how I work right now, in all the communities I've worked, I work at the pleasure of the council. Running the day to day operations, the oversight, management, as well as leading some of the bigger thinking, some of the planning. Here, it's, it's very similar, it'd be very similar in a charter township setup in that would answer to the board, carry out the board's, the board's policy recommendations and policy that they pass. One thing that I love, and I just have to say this, is I am a huge proponent of strategic planning. Brought it into Crystal Falls when I was there, brought it into the DDA in Iron Mountain when I was there, as well as to Portland when I was the DDA director there. I've been reading through your minutes and it looks like you have a history of doing strategic planning, which I love. As a manager, it's never fun to try to guess what seven people want. With strategic planning, you allow insight, that along with a master plan allows insight. But basically, with that, it's working at the policy and direction of the council and the council as a whole. Never just one council member, always listen, but the direction comes from the council as a whole.
Okay, that sounds good. Number three, Ernie?
Sir, John, treasure. The question I have is, what have you learned about market township? And what would your recommendation, recommended direction be for the rest of this year? And then in general, to the next five years?
Well, for this year, it's going to be retrenchment and holding on because you don't know what's going to happen with that, with any Act 51 money, at least we at the village here. With you revenue sharing, with us revenue sharing, you don't know what's going to happen. So I would hold on tight right now. But I will say this, what is that old saying? The Chinese use the same character for crisis and opportunity. There's an opportunity to be had here with every Michigan municipal government. There's the opportunity to see what we've done and to see how we do things and to move, to see if we need to shift that. For example, here, we weren't really prepared for it. Nobody had thought about masks. Nobody had really thought about hand sanitizers. Nobody had thought about this. And of course, like everybody else, we scrambled and tried to find everything. Now, my DPW, my police, they've continued working and they're covered and they're good. We've closed the, the village hall, but they're good. But we need to think about these things and think about some of the things that maybe six months ago, we would have considered crazy. We would have considered, you know, the sky is falling type of thinking. But right now, I would say, we need, every Michigan municipal government needs to look at what they do, look at what they have planned and think about it. For example, we had a water and street improvement project up here on the north side of town, a $1.3 million project that we were looking to pay cash for. They had been saving for quite a while for. And this is the crisis and opportunity is that we decide not to bid it because we don't know where it's going to go. We were right on the cusp of bidding it, had the design worked on everything. We didn't know, we decided to halt. I get a call in from, from one of the regional planning commissions and say, hey, there might be EDA funds available for this, which is great. So we are going to wait, but we're also going to apply for these EDA funds because they go past, pass some of our businesses. And I would say the same thing from our charter township. You have some things you're looking to do. Okay, we have to wait, but is that bad? Let's see if it's bad, let's see what we can do in the interim. In the next five years, I would consider, I would, I would urge caution with, with things that we're going to do because we don't know how this is going to change. We don't know if COVID-20 is coming. So caution, but this is back again, we're strategic planning, good financial stewardship go a long, long way. Let's see what we can do. Let's see what we can do with the state, with the federal government. Again, crisis and opportunity, there's an opportunity to be had here. And I firmly believe that looking at that and taking a good, long, hard look at it is what needs to be done before any big projects, any big purchases come to pass. Unless you have the cash for it, but even then, it's not guaranteed. For example, we have a Cargill plant. The Egg McMuffin you might get in the morning from McDonald's, that came from Lake Odessa. Those, all those eggs come from Lake Odessa. They have also, they have cut production way down. So our water department, our water fund is much lower. I don't know what the ramifications are going to be of that. I don't know when it's going to come back. I think caution is the key word. But again, plan for the next five years. Look forward into, i- i- into where we're going to go. Alongside of that, the one thing, now I spent quite a good bit of time up in your neck of the woods. Actually, the computer I'm using right now was purchased at the Best Buy, right up there, when I was up in Crystal Falls. Those, that area, the US 41 M28 corridor is concerning to me because of dark stores, the dark store legislation. I realize not a lot's being done, but we need to push any button or pull any lever we can to get that done because that is just a huge ripper from a municipality and it's patently unfair, one man's opinion. We need to work on that, but we also need to work on getting businesses back in there. I know the mall over there has been having some issues and I'm just worried about it. But you are in such a unique position. You are the shopping destination for the Upper Peninsula. Some people may disagree with that, but I know a lot more people that would agree with that. That's where you go for Target, that's where you go for Best Buy, that's where you go for all of these, for Lowe's, for all of these, these different places. We need to work on keeping those businesses in and drawing in new businesses, drawing in new residents, getting them to come in. So the next five years, that's what I would work on. Financial, and you may say, well, that, Patrick, that's great, but what does that have to do with finances? Has everything to do with finances? Letting people know, in a few months, we're reopening for business. We're going to bring you in, you're going to enjoy yourself, you're going to, you're going to have a good time up here and this is the place to stay. That was long, I apologize.
Thank you, thank you.
That's okay, that's all right. Pete, number four?
Patrick, Pete LaRue. What is your knowledge and concept of dark stores? Apparently you know somewhat about it. Speaks to the impact it had on our township.
You, you know, Pete, um, I haven't, honestly, I haven't had to deal with it a lot. I used to go to the UP city managers' meetings, but as you know, Crystal Falls doesn't exactly have a lot of the big box stores. Great town, don't get me wrong, but they don't have any fast food or really any big box stores to worry about. What I do know is just basically that they, they compare you to the, to something that isn't fair. They compare you to vacant comparables and could be from almost anywhere. And your tax, the, the taxes they pay on it are next to nothing, relatively speaking. You know, other states are taxed a heck of a lot higher than they are in Michigan. I know that nothing's being done on it. It was a big buzzword a couple of few years ago, and then it seems to have died on the vine. And we need to push the Bola Fades of the world to keep looking at that, to realize the impact that it has on a community. Honestly, the word that I would use is equity. I'm not, in, in no community, am I looking to make billions of dollars off of a business, but I'm looking for fairness. I'm looking for equity. I'm looking for everything to be fair. And I think the way that they value those types of buildings with, what with the restrictions on it and everything else is patently unfair and it needs to be looked at again. In that vein, we need to see what else we can get in, in the appropriate zoning districts, what we can bring in, what will work for the community. I'm a huge proponent of market analysis, of knowing what needs to go where. A funny story I had when I was in Iron Mountain, they had a market analysis done. Market analysis are great, but you have to inject common sense in them too. They said that we could use, I think it was four shoe stores. They don't need four shoe stores. But I, I appreciate the data, but, you know, using a little common sense. What can we get in there? What do people want? And that's the biggest one. What do people want there? Not what can our market sector handle, what do people want? And bring those, bring those, work to bring those businesses, work with site selectors, work with corporations, work with developers to bring in the, the businesses that will work. So with dark stores, I'm scared of them. They worry me. They, what worries me is nothing is being done. And we need to push hard to keep those, to keep legislation, good legislation to come in to correct that issue.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Pat.
Okay, number five, Dan?
Hi, Pat, Dan Anderson, I'm a trustee. I'm glad to hear that you're somewhat familiar with strategic plan because that's, my question is, the board began the process of new strategic plan and with, and was waylaid by the world recent virus problem. What steps would you take to help the board finish it?
Right now, it's going to be tough, Dan. I'm the type of guy, these Zoom meetings, while necessary, I get, I am an in-person person. I like to roll up my sleeves and feel the table underneath my arms and talk to people. Right now, Zoom is probably the way it's going to work for the immediate future. If I knew how long this was, would last, Dan, I'd have six lucky Lotto numbers that I'd go out and purchase a ticket with and make millions off of that way. I don't, so I would say Zoom and do whatever we can to make it work, passing ideas along as needed. But with strategic planning, I'm not just a, and I'm not exactly sure. I've, I've read that you, you are doing strategic planning. I'm not exactly sure if it's just the board or if it's staff as well. And my personal opinion is staff should be included in with strategic planning. It should be led by the board, carried by the board, yep, you bet. But staff sometimes have some really good ideas and some really good insights that, that, that the board may not have. Their total team approach with everything I do in Crystal Falls, in, in, in Lake Odessa here, even in Portland, when I was, even when I was the interim team, bringing everybody together. We all have to live in this world, we all have to occupy this world, we all have to work in this world. Let's all do it together. Put aside the, you know, one time he said this, or they said that, or this happened or that happened. Work together. My guess is Zoom. Zoom, email, not violating any Open Meetings Act, anything like that. Work, work together. I, I wish I had a great answer for this. This is my first COVID epidemic, so, but COVID-20, I'll be an expert, but COVID-19, right now, it's kind of figuring out as we go, just like everybody else is. But keep the process moving is the most important part.
Yeah, we're all struggling with it and it's all new to everybody. And we, we definitely like to have the team approach and listen to all of our, all of our great workers that we have in the township.
You've got some good ones. I'm not sure if one of them's on there, but I have met John Tangus before, so. And his name was ballyhooed by my DPW in Crystal Falls. So if John is on, they love you in Crystal Falls.
You can have.
We do also. Thank you, Pete.
Okay, thank you for that. Randy, number six?
Hi, Pat, this is Clerk Rattari. Question six is, what steps have you taken in your previous occupations to build an atmosphere of teamwork, especially among different departments?
Sure, well, when I was in Crystal Falls, the, the one I'll give you is this. My DPW and my electric department did not get along. They, they would snipe at each other. When I first got there, I saw that right away. They would, one would come in my office and say, well, they did this and the other, the other department come in and say, the other department did that. You know what I did? It's, it's really silly. I went down to electric and I said, you know, who cooks the best burgers in this area? I'm new, I don't know anything from hamburgers. Who, who cooks the best one? And of course, electric department said, well, we do, we, we cook the best. What are you, what are you talking about? And I went, oh, okay. Walked over to DPW and said, you know what those guys were telling me over there? They cook the best burgers, is that true? No, we, we had a burger competition, I think still exists to this day. No, we, we had a burger competition, I think still exists to this day. And I bought a little trophy and we had lunch. And I got um the chief of police, um, an engineer from GEI that worked for the city. And uh, I believe it was the mayor to come in and judge these. But it's little things like that. The other one I had, I brought to you in Crystal Falls, it sounds really simple, staff meetings. Just on Tuesdays at eight thirty, sitting down and talking, what's going on, you know, and, and it was a, it was almost a Hatfield and McCoy type of thing where it's just, we, you just need to get together and talk. We're all pulling on the rope in the same direction. But you know, golf outings, getting people together, uh having the Christmas parties, having, one of the things we did in Portland that I thought was fantastic was we had a safety committee, which um, uh, what we did was um, we'd have uh four all-staff safety meetings every year. We'd have um, department had safety meetings once a month. And those four all-staff, two of them, one was Christmas and we'd talk about safety issues and then we would have a Christmas potluck. And then the summer, we'd have a cookout. Just little things like that to realize that everybody needs to settle down. We're all pulling on the rope in the same way. We're all trying for the same goal, to provide good service to the community. And I think a lot of it honestly is could just plain old communication, sitting down there and talking with them. You know, and, and it was tough in Crystal Falls because I was the first manager that had not been from the community. I was the first manager that had a contract. I walked in there and I was public enemy number one before I said one word. And I think after about six months, they understood that I wasn't there to, you know, turn their world on its ear. I'll tell you one other thing I did in Crystal Falls, which, which I'm actually proud of. So in Crystal Falls, the, in the charter, it said that the budget, preparation of the budget was the, and, and to uh submit the budget was the, the work of the uh city manager. And so we started on the budget first thing when I got there and we printed off copies of the budget, blank budget with just the previous years filled in, gave them to each of the department heads and said, here, the wages are filled in, the insurance are filled in, the bonded indebtedness is filled in. You fill in the rest under, under requested and come back to me and we'll talk about it. This caused my employees to have uh two meetings altogether. And basically I found out later it was the, what is he trying to do? He doesn't want to do his work. My theory on it was, I'm asking you to make the meal. I might as well let you shop for the groceries. Um, and they got, they, 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 they understood it once we talked. I mean, there was initial trepidation, but they understood it. And I said, you know, I'm giving you more latitude. You're professionals. You're being paid. I'm not, you're not interns. You're the department heads, run your departments. And that's how I've always dealt with department heads is, I trust you until you give me some reason not to trust you. And I've never been let down yet, knock on wood. Um, but those things build team. Those things build, bring people together. Um, treating them like adults brings them together. I, I give latitude, but I expect results and I hold people to those results. But those things bring people together. You'd be amazed. I saw it work firsthand in Crystal Falls. And it's the one takeaway I will take wherever I'm, wherever life takes me, I'll take with me.
Thank you, Pat. That was an excellent answer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, number seven, Dave.
Well, Dave, take yourself off of mute.
That's the bad part about having it on mute. Pat is the economic trustee, um, realizing that our residents are stockholders and shareholders. How would you keep them informed, educated, and engage their input?
Uh, Facebook is huge. Um, I gotta tell you, on a personal level, I gave up Facebook about a year ago. Um, you know, still work to keep things out there, keep in the mill. My chief of police here is a Facebook wizard and I've learned a lot just from watching her. Facebook newsletters, town hall meetings, my door is open all of the time. Somebody wants to come in, they can come in. Um, I've had people come in and tell me what a great job we're doing. I had a gentleman in Crystal Falls come in and threaten to punch me in the face. Um, I obviously like one more than the other, but um, I understand that's sometimes how it works. Uh, any means necessary, go to events, be seen in public, go to the grocery store and expect that you're going to get asked about what's going on with that roundabout, what's going on with that park, what's going on here, what's going on there. And I don't shy away from it. Um, that's part of the job. That's part of the job I actually enjoy. And not every one of those leads away, you know, somebody walking down the aisle going, oh, that was great. I, 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 I'm really happy. Some people are more mad when they go, you know, I feel bad for the grocery store because they might have, you know, hurt their sales just by talking about something going on in the, in the government. But you know, the good and the bad communication is just vitally important in, in any means, any means I can get. Website is crucial. Um, for me, uh, a website that has broken links, I don't trust. That has pages that lead to nowhere, I don't like. And it causes an eyebrow to be raised. Fix the little things. Talk to people, attend meetings. Um, I don't care if it's, you know, anything from, from a fair board to League of Women Voters. I'll stop out, I'll talk, they can have my ear, they can chew on it. And let's see if we can help them. That's the other thing is, is I think when you do listen, you have to be responsive. Now, sometimes that response is no. And I don't have a problem delivering that. In fact, I delivered one today, uh, this morning. Gentlemen who, we have a uh, a policy or an ordinance here where um, you know, we'll help defray the cost of a new sidewalk if it's ripped up and broken, worse than thirty percent of it is, you know, deteriorated beyond repair. We will allow it to be ripped out and we will have it replaced and we'll pay fifty percent of it to the homeowner. Well, this gentleman who uh gave my DPW supervisor an earful, um, because he said he missed one step and that he ripped it out before having anybody inspect it. And so he wanted it from me and so I got an earful, but the answer was still no. You know, you deliver it honest and firm and no it is. But communicate both the good and the bad equally. It is what it is. Um, and we have to follow the steps, but I digress. Any communication, but I'm, like I said, website, Facebook, even Twitter, even Twitter. I don't like saying that, but even Twitter, um, whatever we can use to get the message out there.
All right, thanks, Pat.
Thanks. Excuse me, thank you. Uh, our last question is, why should we hire you over the other three candidates?
Because I know policy and I'm good in crisis. I'm good at crisis management. And I, I'm not, please don't think that I'm an arrogant person because I'm not. That's why I pause to say this because I don't like saying things like this. I'm a clutch player. When this whole thing went down, we moved, we moved fast, we moved quick. Now, I don't have thirty, forty, fifty employees. I have ten. But I knew immediately the thing that we needed to do was continue working, having our police work. We split their shifts. We got them away from one another. We did the same thing with DPW. We staggered them. We moved them out. The health and safety of my employees is a very big item for me, um, especially with this. Um, an old boss one time that gave me the best advice ever, and I'm sure you have all heard it, but you have two ears, one mouth. Use the one you have two of. Listen. Listen and react. Um, I think I bring a sense of understanding of the Upper Peninsula. Now, I don't know where your other um applicants are from. Um, I know that I, this is where I want to end my career. Um, I have an offer to buy some property already, so, some, um, from one of my buddies for a camp. I'm eager to be up there. That's where my life is going to be. Um, I hope, I hope it's Marquette Charter Township. I really do because I love the place. I love what you've done. It's wide open. Everybody I've talked to about your board, about your, your manager Randy, has nothing but glowing things to say. And like I said about John, I hear glowing things. I want to be a part of that. Um, my life will be up there. Hope it's there. Um, and I'm looking forward to, to getting up there as soon as possible and uh getting uh, getting my hands dirty.
Hey, thanks for that. Um, I'm going to ask if the board has any follow-up questions, but first of all, do you have any questions for us?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I actually do. Um, I see that uh you've worked pretty closely with MDOT um on the roundabouts. And I'll tell you right now, I'm actually a fan of roundabouts. They've been proven to bring traffic through more efficiently. Yes, they're confusing. Um, yes, I think if anybody's traveled down to Green Bay, they think they win a little overkill on them personally. Um, in that you'll encounter like four of them in a row. But what has been the experience with the, the public, um, has there been public outcry about the roundabouts up in that area? I, I know it's split from what I've heard, but I like them. But if you can just tell me a little bit about that, anyone.
Manager Gerard's probably going to have the most contact with the residents on that if you want to weigh in.
Sure, no problem. Um, basically the, the response has been pretty much positive. Um, generally the folks that have had a problem with it are the ones that aren't following the instructions on how to use a roundabout. Uh, typically improper lane changes or too fast for conditions. Uh, they, they are coming down a hill going sixty-five miles an hour and don't slow down enough uh to get into the roundabout. But overall, it's worked well and most of the folks are positive.
What have plow drivers been saying about them going through them? Because that was what I'd always heard was plow drivers, it was going to be a nightmare for them.
That's always the first comment that comes out, but I've not had one plow driver complain and I've not received any complaints regarding plowing.
Okay, we have here in Lake Odessa, we have, um, they did a few years ago, a street improvement project on our main street and they did bump outs. Um, I don't think I'm a new urbanist, but I would say that uh, uh, traffic colony is important to me. Um, I like bump outs. I, I like roundabouts, but you know, I, personal opinion, um, I see the good in them. Um, so appreciate that, Randy. Thank you very much for that. Um, tell me what the most important thing facing Marquette Charter Township in the next five years is. I, and I don't know whoever wants to handle this. This is double, this is tough in person. It's double tough doing this, so. I don't know how you'd like to do it if one person would like to speak on behalf, but next five years, what, o- outside of, of just unknowing in the finances, what, what's the most important thing facing Marquette Charter Township?
Would like.
Anybody?
Yeah, go ahead.
Training a manager.
I'm hoping we've conquered that one already.
But well, but basically, I want to go back to your roundabouts. I, I think that generally, there was a lot of reservation about roundabouts when they started. But I think it's been a learning curve for the people here. And generally, the opinion has changed to being, it looks like it's working and it is a more favorable opinion of them. That's my, that's my answer to your earlier question.
Sure. Sure. Actually, I, I completely understand it because I, I think Frank put out a questionnaire. And in it, I talked about bringing uh waste management into Crystal Falls. Now, you think it's trash. It's not a big deal. You know, bringing the little roll-off carts and everything. I did not realize I would start a firestorm with this. I saw it was needed. Um, the council agreed. We moved forward and I had people coming to meetings saying that maybe it was time to send the troll back downstate. But I'll tell you what, we held some, we held some informational meetings. We brought in the carts for them to play with. We brought in the bags. We brought in everything. And it was pretty much the same thing in that people lost their mind beginning and it was a, oh my God, the sky is falling. But I, I mean, it was really quick how people went, this is great. And I went, well, you know, it was something that's needed and, you know, we didn't clean up the neighborhoods and, and it was just a, it was a good thing, but it was an education component that I love too. So that's one of the things I enjoy doing is changing people's mind on things, or at least the attempt of, you know, garbage totes aren't bad. So I, I'm sorry, I, I've interrupted, so.
Um, but do they have anything else on the township challenges that they want to share?
I'd like to share some. I'd like to, yeah. We need affordable housing in our township and we also need to complete some of our projects, I think, in order to have secure water, sewer, or infrastructure all over, so it'll attract more people to come and live in our township. Uh, it seemed like every year we get more and more people going on uh their dark store issues, so that's a lack of income from us. So we've got a lot of green area and I think there's a lot of possibilities there. So I'd like to see us put down and finish up our infrastructure plans for the future. Have, have our water secured, so we don't have to worry about that. We got water on both ends of our, because we draw from the, the city and the lake. And, and the west side, there's possibilities up there, but find some affordable housing so we can, because the city of Marquette's running out of land for people to build houses and stuff like that, or they're just going straight up in apartments. And a lot of people around here, younger people would like to have a little house and a garage and do things outside. Older you get, you start thinking about apartments and stuff like that and people coming in. But I think we have to look at our infrastructure, what we can do to draw more and more business into our area as far as the mall area and stuff like that. And uh, that's about it. I, I'd like to know what you, you'll see that we need up here, being from Crystal Falls and what happened in Crystal Falls that you wanted, like to see Crystal Falls do besides plow the hill up there. And uh, it never happened.
The uh.
It's been sort of a, mediocre for years and years, except for McNeil's gas station out there and the grocery store out there, the IG, well, it's not IG no more, but.
Uh, yeah, it's Crystal Freshmark, I think. It, it was actually funny. A, a good friend of mine is uh, and maybe you know him, is Bob LaFave over in Lott's. And Bob, I went to graduate school with and we kind of both got jobs in the UP at the same time and we just always kind of leaned on each other for, you know, questions and answers. And it was funny because Bob said to me, first day I get up to Crystal Falls, he said to me, he goes, well, he says, welcome back to the UP. I said, well, thanks, Bob. He goes, now remember, you're in Iron County. He said, in the UP, politics is a contact sport. In Iron County, it's a blood sport. And you know, blood sport might be a little rough, but boy, they, they play for keeps in Iron County. Iron County was just tremendously interesting, um, especially being somebody from downstate. But I tell you what, some of the best people I ever met were in Iron County. Um, some of my lifelong friends, you know, just the ones you know are going to be there forever. Um, straight from Crystal Falls. One, one question I have, and Randy, if I'm putting you on the spot, I apologize, but it, it is a question of mine. With having a water uh fund in the water department, with the lead and copper rules, um, have you done the, and again, if I'm putting you on the spot, I do apologize. But i- is there quite a few number of service lines you're going to have to replace going into the homes?
No, uh, there's not. We're, we're in very good shape in that regard, uh, monitoring it constantly. Uh, the, our system is relatively new. Our oldest pipe in the ground is from the mid-seventies. So you know, we're, we're in pretty decent shape there.
Okay. That, that, that's one of the issues that seems everybody's facing. In this community, I'm actually pretty good. They, they took it upon themselves years ago to uh start changing things out, so we seem to be sitting pretty well. Um, Supervisor Durant, I could sit here and ask questions all day, but I'm, you've got other things to do, so uh, I will cut it short at those questions, but please know that I have about five more.
Well, I didn't know if the board had anything else to share, ask questions, um, or respond to your, your challenges question too.
What about you, you?
Pardon?
What about the union?
Sure, yeah. That was your question before.
Oh, uh.
Or um, experience do you have?
Uh, well, when I was in Crystal Falls, I um, I had two bargaining units that I dealt with, which was the Police Officers Association of Michigan, which was basically my DPW and one officer. And I also had the International Brotherhood of Electric Workers, um, because of our electric department. Uh, smoothest negotiations I've ever had in my life. Um, I was told when I came in that there would be no way that the employees would ever pay twenty percent of their insurance. And we bargained that and it was relatively painless. But again, it's, I don't walk into union negotiations, and I should say I'm. But again, it's, I don't walk into union negotiations, and I should say I'm working with POLC with my police department here. I don't walk into the union negotiations trying to be Donald Trump and trying to get the, I want something that's fair. I want something that we can live with as management and that the workers can live with and just finding common ground. This is, we all want the same thing. But I'll tell you a story. I had the, before I was, when I was, or sorry, when I was interim in Portland, my mentor was the city manager and he left, he was actually a municipal attorney, who became a city manager for almost 20 years, and he went back to being a municipal attorney. And he was very hard-edged, he loved, you know, the art of the deal, he loved that. Trying to squeeze every good thing out he could. And he rubbed some folks the wrong way. And one of my first days as the interim, I had the gentleman who worked in the electric department come in and he had some gripes about what the parks and recreation department was doing on Saturdays as far as what they call floating fields, they had softball fields. And floating the fields and preparing the fields for play on Saturday and Sunday. Well, the union contract said that, you know, except for the softball fields, you know, it was a DPW call-in, which is fine, which is absolutely fine. Well, they were emptying the trash outside of the fields, just, I mean, on the other side of the fence. And his contention was that, look, that's DPW work. And I said, no, that's getting the fields ready. And we had a bit of back and forth and he got upset and he said, well, you know, we'll file a grievance. I said, go ahead. I said, grievances don't scare me. Grievances is, you look at it one way, I look at it another way, it's a formal way to come to common ground and to get a better understanding. In fact, I'll tell you what, we had an issue in Crystal Falls with the use of sick time, where I actually requested that the, that POAM file a grievance as the manager. I don't know if your other applicants are gonna say that, and I don't know if that makes me the dumbest guy here, but I wanted it to be formalized. I don't like shooting from the hip. And I don't like employees, employee A being treated differently than employee B when all things are relative. Treat them all equitably, treat them all the same, work together. We're not Detroit where we've got, you know, 9,000 people working. We're family, and I bring the family concept to any job that I'm at. So as far as unions, I have no issue with it, go forth, we can talk, that's great. Whatever instrument or tool makes the employees feel comfortable to come and talk to me, I'm fine with.
Good.
Okay. Any other questions, follow-ups from the board? Randy?
Patrick, you have a small staff where you're at, what have you done with that staff as far as cross-training and many vacancies? You know, if someone was out for the office for a long time or something, how would you backfill that?
The cross-training has actually been me. Learning how to take utility bills, which I learned up in Crystal Falls, but had to learn new system here. Learning to take minutes. I've had a clerk that has had to miss a meeting before. And so, the board, the board here and myself, either I take minutes or they, or they bring somebody, one of the board members to take minutes. I am very big on cross-training. Some people, I think, when they're in that position, find it threatening, like, oh, they're gonna, you know, cut me out and replace me. I'm not looking to replace anybody. You're here for a reason, if you do good work, I'm not looking to replace. But I think there should always be a bit of cross-training, but it's difficult here with having four members in my DPW, four members in my police, and then basically myself and the clerk treasurer. But any instance there is, in Crystal Falls, we had the electric department would, some of those members, because they had CDLs, would come in and snowplow if somebody was off or somebody was sick. But it was understood that DPW was the main, and then I left it to the DPW foreman to bring in as he felt needed, or as he felt was needed. I am open to cross-training, very open to it. I've been fortunate enough to not have to really worry about it a ton. In Portland, you know, everybody pretty much knew their role and moved forward. But I'm always open to it and I'm always open looking for new avenues to increase people's education. I'll tell you what, it kinda deals with that. The best compliment I've ever received as a manager wasn't in Portland. We had, Portland has an income tax, this is Portland, Michigan, I always forget, there's like 15 Portlands in the United States. In Portland, Michigan, we had an income tax and we had an income tax, we had an income tax clerk who was also our HR person. And the manager before me, he pretty much handled everything. And I brought her into meetings on insurance, or we did webinars, or went to conferences. And I did this with other employees too, but I basically expanded her role and her responsibilities. And I'll tell you, the nicest compliment I received was, at the end of it, was, you know, thank you for giving me responsibility. I was starting to hate this job. And then you gave me the opportunity to expand my, basically spread my wings. And that stuck with me. And so, cross-training is great, wherever I can find it, go with it. But like I said, I've been fortunate not to have to worry about too much beyond myself.
All right, thanks, Patrick.
You bet.
John, did you say you had a question?
I do, while it's not, it's just a statement I wanna make and I would like to get an answer. Each of the candidates, I'm gonna ask the same question to. We in Marquette Township have been blessed with outstanding staff leadership. Our assessor, our department of public works leader, and our planner are all outstanding people in our staff. How do you feel about committee of staff leadership meetings with the manager on a regular basis so that they can each learn from each other and know what's going on? How do you feel about that? I think you've answered it, but I'd like to hear it again.
Absolutely critical. 100% critical, the, if I am chosen, the first week, there will be a staff meeting. I don't know if currently, if Randy holds one or not, but absolutely, absolutely. There, again, we're on the same team. Sometimes I think in the communities I've been in, Crystal Falls is a great, is a great example. You had a bunch of people on a bunch of different islands. And the thing that I said was, the side of your truck all says Crystal Falls, your check says Crystal Falls, the name tag you have, the ID badge says Crystal Falls. We're all in together, absolutely, 100% critical. Those will be a weekly occurrence for me.
Thank you, Patrick.
You bet.
Any other follow-ups? I have just one, you were talking about when we did the communication with the residents question. We have quite a few, I don't have a number, but some of the ones I've talked to and have called me, who don't have computers, they don't have smartphones, they rely on the newspaper, which is great, but that's not a very comprehensive way of knowing what the township is doing, especially even more on an intimate level. How do you deal with them?
Can everybody hear me? First of all, I'm getting a little thing that says my audio is not working.
It was staticky a minute ago.
Okay, that was probably the best point I made was during that sad.
You can hear it.
Sure, very easily, four words, coffee with the manager. Monthly, bi-weekly, have them come on out, I brew a pot of coffee, they come and sit down, they can choose either ear to chew on. And we talk about everything that's going on, whether it's, boy, the weather's nice, or hey, there's still that pothole on my street. Absolutely, I mean, like I said, any meeting I have the opportunity to go to, I'll be at. I do that here, any meeting I have the pleasure to attend, I will be here. And, you know, you walk into that thinking that probably 80% of people are gonna yell at me. Really, 80% of the people are great. And, you know, even the 20% that are yelling, that doesn't make them wrong. It just makes their delivery not what you'd want, but you know what? Talk to people. I don't care if I have to knock on doors, which I've done on a number of occasions already in every community I've been in. And like I said, open door, coffee with the manager, whatever it takes.
Okay, anything else, board members?
I'm just asking, Pete again, what do you perceive for Marquette Township? You know, believe me, you've been in here enough times and through it, what do you see in Marquette Township? You know, I know there are things in Crystal you probably would have liked to change, but you, you know, you just can't do it or it won't go, it's just not gonna fit. What do you see from other areas now that Marquette Township could do to grow?
It's hard to compare, and honestly, it's hard to compare any municipalities I've been in. I mean, yeah, you can with Marquette Township. Crystal Falls, which sounds weird, would actually be the, the thing I loved about Crystal Falls, maybe I should tell you that. The thing I loved about Crystal Falls was, I walked about 30 steps out of my office and I had one of the prettiest views I ever had at any place I've ever worked. You've probably, a lot of you, if not all of you, have been downstate. My fiance is actually sitting in the other room right now and she's stuck down here. Is, she'll comment to me that how flat it is here, and it is flat. I mean, it is pancake flat. You have views, protect, this is my own opinion, protect the parks, protect nature. Pay special attention to your zoning, which it looks like you've done. Talk to, as far as the existing, where existing businesses are at, talk to developers, talk to site selectors. Have those conversations with UPEDA, the college, whomever, to see who we can get in here, who would be best fit. Work with those folks. Affordable housing was brought up, can be done, needs to be done correctly, needs to be done with thought, not just, you know, there's some land, build whatever you want. But do it smart, work with NISTDA, which we did in Crystal Falls. My perception of Marquette Township, it is a beautiful place. Being up on Lake Superior is absolutely fantastic. You get the best of both worlds there. You want a city, you're limited distance from it. You wanna get lost in the woods, you're limited distance from that. Marquette, and I mean no disrespect to the city of Marquette, but my fiance and I, we don't wanna live five inches from our neighbors. We wanna live and applaud land, you know, five, 10 acres that we can get and build something. That's why Marquette Township is so appealing to me, is that freedom with convenience. I don't know if that answered your question, but man, it felt good to say.
Sounds good. Anything else, board members? Coming up on our hour anyway, so. Okay, well, we don't have a timeframe right now, we're guessing that most of our applicants have a two-week to 30-day notice for their current employers. And this whole zooming stuff has really put a damper on one-to-one, you know, or seven-to-one communications. A couple of board members have hoped that we can do a one-on-one at some point, live and in person. But we'll see where that goes with the governor and what else, you know, what other restrictions she puts or what she lifts.
Supervisor Graham, I have a mask and a car, I'm willing to come up there anytime you need me.
Well, I'm kinda guessing, and I haven't heard yea or nay from the board, that we will probably narrow it to one or two and do a second interview. That's in person or not, you know, again, we'll have to wait and see. We have done one of our board meetings, actually, it was a special meeting, just spread out in the boardroom. And that was okay, and a few on the phone, it worked, but interviews are a little different, you kinda like to see more than that, you know?
Get a sense of the person.
Right, so, I don't know, I don't know where this is going, I don't know when we'll make a decision. We have a board meeting Tuesday, I'm guessing we'll have an open conversation and try to make sure what the next step is and to let you all, all four of you know for sure.
Sure, well, I appreciate all the board members and the staff that are on, I appreciate the opportunity, thank you very much.
You bet, thanks for coming, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Okay, Clerk Patari?
I'm going to leave. Lynn, I will put that posting up and I will stop the recording and we'll be back at 1:00. 1:55, I'll be back, so I'll put that posting up and we'll go from there.
Sounds great. Thanks, gang. Zooming the Marquette Township Board interview process. Let's see, Michael has joined us, welcome to Marquette Township, surreal. Um, we have some questions for you, we figure it'll take about an hour roughly. These are things that are important to the township, even though you may not know all the answers, that's okay too. Then we will, we'll start out with having you tell us a little about yourself, we'll do the questions and then any follow-up questions from the board, and then you can ask us some questions if you have any.
That sounds wonderful.
Oh, the whole board's ready, four, five, six, seven, okay, we're good, we have some other folks listening in. So tell us about Michael Kramer.
Well, thank you very much. First of all, let me thank you for giving me the opportunity to meet all of you and interview for this position. I've been very excited about this opportunity and anxious for the opportunity to go and talk to y'all. As you had mentioned, my name is Michael Kramer. I am a municipal manager currently living in Apex, North Carolina. I am a credentialed manager from the International City County Managers Association. And I have about 24 years of municipal experience in one way, shape, or form during my career. One of the things that you can't find out from me about me and my family, from reading my resume, is the things that we like to do and experience outside of the workplace. One of the reasons why we're extremely interested in Marquette Township is the fact that you have an abundance of outdoor recreational opportunities, which is extremely important to us. My family and I, we enjoy to get outside, hunt fish, like to hike in the woods, experience life, so to speak. And we like to be close enough to amenities, yet close enough to the outdoors that we can go and recreate and unwind after a long day's work. So that's the kind of person that I am and the family that we have. My experiences range in the governmental area from budgeting and finance to HR, to administering operations departments and various programs and policies associated to those. Stormwater, water sewer, transportation. I've had two communities that I've been a part of where I was either their town manager or city manager, one of them being in the UP with the rest of y'all. And that was Menominee, and I was there for about two and a half years. Wonderful place, really enjoyed the outdoor experience and the upper peninsula. We ended up having to move because we had a hard time getting my wife a job in the same general location. She actually ended up in Baraboo, Wisconsin for about a year and a half. And although the drive is beautiful back and forth, a four-hour drive wears and tears on a marriage every weekend. So we went to Carolina Beach, North Carolina, where we had vacationed at various times. And we spent about five years there where I was their town manager. Both of those communities are full-service communities with all the typical attributes of a small town, police, fire, transportation, public works activities, planning and things of that nature. Both of those communities have had some level of a marina associated to them in Carolina. In Carolina Beach, it was one that was right there off the ocean. And naturally, I'm sure y'all know about Menominee's marina there. So, I have some experience dealing with water and the special concerns about dealing with water and those types of tourist activities. So, I think I have a very well-rounded base of experience in many aspects of normal municipal or governmental activities.
Excellent. Okay. Thank you for sharing. All right. John, let's start with question one.
Michael, the, you've been in the Upper Peninsula, so maybe this isn't such a foreign question to you, but what we're interested in is having your comments regarding the differences between a traditional township and a charter township as we are. And if you could speak to that, we'd appreciate that.
Well, I guess in, in general, the difference between a tow, charter township and a regular standard Michigan township are very limited. In the case of both circumstances, you have roads and things like that are, that are handled by the road commission. You have planning and zoning, which are handled by the township itself. Quite often, you have some level of county police or fire. In your case, you have a fire, volunteer fire department for the entire township. I, I think for the most part, what you find is charter townships are really ones that in proximity to large communities or larger residential or urban bases. Quite often, that's because there's more services that have to be applied and utilized in those areas.
Okay. Well, we're a victim of the Michigan Township Association. We're a victim of the state legislature. That you probably would simply agree with. I thank you for your answer, anyway.
Very much so. And, and all of the municipal jurisdictions or governmental jurisdictions in Michigan are set up as almost wards of the state, so to speak. They have been developed and created specifically in the state.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, my question would be about policy governance. We have adopted that a few years ago, and I wonder if you have an understanding of that, especially how it relates to the manager's position?
Well, I, I think that in most circumstances, the township board or a county board or city board are really the ones that ought to be the policy managers for the organization. You all have the experience and understanding and the contact with the constituents to know what policy direction you want to take the organization in. The township manager really is there to go help provide you with information. They're a support system for you and the staff and the public in providing information about various topics or policies or issues related to any number of things you might run into. And then we get the fun of implementing what you decide is a policy for the community. If your interest is in a robust downtown environment, then economic development may be a key point to your policies, and that's something that managers get to help implement.
Okay. Good deal. Number three is Ernie's question.
My question on the Township Treasure, question I have, what have you learned about Marquette Township? And what would your recommendation, recommend, recognized direction be for the rest of this, this year, and then in general to the five years?
I have taken an opportunity to look through your website and try and peruse through much of the budget and finance documentation that you have on there. Just in general, what I've noticed is that it seems to have been a very well-run, financially stable community. You have both good and appropriate levels of revenue and expenses. You have a good level of fund balance and your debt is relatively low. I think that for the most part, what I can gather from some of your policies, you seem to want to continue that type of framework and yet still possibly adjust or improve various aspects of the community. So, that'll be definitely a challenge going forward in the next one to five years or so in seeing how you can balance good fiscal management in the way that you have before and yet possibly add amenities such as trails and other types of activities or improvements to parks and things of that nature. In the first year, I can see that this COVID-19 crisis is going to play a significant role in how finances are managed by most every community across the United States. And I don't think that you're going to be a whole lot different than that. The scale may be a little bit different, but I'm sure that there are parts of your organization that are no longer collecting good revenues and that that may slow down implementation of various projects or things that you want to do in the future. So, I can see the next year or so being very challenging in trying to balance those types of activities.
Number four is Pete's. Pete, you're on mute.
Oh, I did. Well, Dave said shut it off, so I shut it off. Pete LaRue here. What is your knowledge and concept of dark stores? Speak to the impact it has had on our township.
Can you repeat that one? I didn't hear exactly what you had said.
What is your knowledge of the, of the concept of the dark stores? And speak to the impact it had on our township.
Honestly, I have not heard of the concept of dark stores. If I was to hazard a guess, it would be related to developments where you have buildings or businesses that have been vacant and there is no activity in them and trying to revitalize those areas and get retail establishments or businesses back into those areas. Quite a bit of the activity that I've been engaged in for probably the last five years or so has been economic development-type activities in trying to build a baseline for new businesses to come into and specifically the city or the town of Carolina Beach there in North Carolina. So, that's not a term, dark business is not a term that I've heard of or dark store, but I think that's probably the concept behind it.
The concept behind is they want to be taxed on a store that's closed. Say they'll have a, a box stores in another area, they want to be taxed the same up here as they are down there. And there's more and more people are going through that process and they're getting, they're getting a deduction on it. So, it's hard for us because we lose a lot of money. You know, in some areas, we can lose up of the $300, $400, $500,000, you know?
That, that's very interesting. It's not a concept that I, I had heard of down here. Typically, in our area, we are not allowed to go and adjust tax rates associated to certain types of business because of their location in other areas. I can see how that would be extremely challenging for communities up in the UP or any rural communities that would have that opportunity or that challenge.
It's, it's interesting and it's not fair, and that's why we're always been, we started fighting. Illinois changed it in their legislature. We, we seem to have in Michigan, we're having a hard time getting that changed in the, if now, right now in Escanaba, you know, 56, 65 miles away from Mirabeau, they're still fight, fighting the battle, but it's awful expensive.
I bet it is.
More and more people are getting on. It's not only the dark, the big box stores. It's a, we have apartment complexes, construction companies, and they all wanted that reduction, and it's just not fair. So, that's where we've been fighting.
Very interesting.
We've been fighting a long time alone, so. It's something that's...
That goes back to the tax tribunal and the, the cost per square foot and the assessment. It's, it's very involved. We could explain it to you, but it would take up your whole interview. But we have, as a county, we've lost millions of dollars, not only in SEV, but in the tax value beside. So, it's been very crippling for us, especially because so much of our area business is in the township, a big part of it on 41. And pretty much everybody has gone to the tribunal and gone from, you know, $80 or $90 a square foot to $25. So, obviously, that means fewer and fewer tax dollars and the middle class ends up taking over, you know, and having to pay the, the burden.
Sure. It's almost a subsidy for the other ratepayers in the system.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Can I, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
What have you attempted to do to try and resolve that concern or educate people about that, that concern and, and change that requirement or that law?
It's not a law. It was a, a legal firm that picked up on it, especially in the smaller communities, and they ended up with, at the point we got involved, they probably had 100 different municipalities that they had targeted, perhaps maybe a Walmart. And they went to the, the taxpayer, the, the Walmart, the business, and said, you know, if I can get you a third of your taxes instead of paying three-thirds, what would you do about that? We'll take a third, you take a third, and we'll write off the other third and let the, you know, everybody else figure it out. So, their premise is that if a Walmart is closed 100 miles or 200 or whatever miles away, and their tax base and assessment is less, you're the, really the same thing. It doesn't matter if you're going concern. They don't look at depreciation, they don't look at cost bases, they don't look at anything. And they captured these 100 or so stores. And then came to, Ernie, would you mute, please?
Yeah.
Came to the bigger stores. It started in, in, we were second, Home Depot in Township. Doesn't matter, anyway. Starts with a B. And it just kind of snowballed throughout the state. And by the time it hit its peak, our township manager and the current supervisor at the time were the resident experts on what this looked like. And we had people calling all over the country, asking about it, how to fight it, what to do about it, what are the ramifications? And it forestalled. The Chamber of Commerce is a big influence in the state, and they did not really help the municipalities. They helped the big stores, which, you know, I mean, that's their job. You know, if you figure that somebody comes to you, and I'm a business owner, and says, I can cut your taxes by, by two-thirds and it only costs you a third, there's no other expense to you, you, why wouldn't you or your board of directors, your owners agree to that? That's just smart business practice. But the trickle-down has been devastating.
I can imagine, especially like you said, in that US 41 corridor of yours.
So, pretty much all of our big stores have gone. And like Pete said, now we've got, you know, the auto, auto shops and the car dealerships and the apartment complexes and that kind of stuff. They've all gone, we say, gone to the tribunal. They pretty much get what they want. So, it's a very involved, we did reach out, we tried the library, we, board members went talked to the, the school board. Manager Gerard did an awesome job of contacting all, contacting all the managers and the supervisors in the state and Michigan Township Association. And we involved a whole bunch of people for a few years. Went to the Supreme Court, cost us a fortune to do it and fight it, and it was all on deaf ears. So, it's still sitting in the legislature, not going anywhere.
I can see that as a big challenge. Yes, ma'am.
It's a long, that's a long, long explanation for a very long problem, and it hasn't gone away, unfortunately. Okay. Number five is Dan's question.
Hey, Michael. The board began the process of a new strategic plan that was waylaid by the world's recent coronavirus development. What steps would you take to bring the board to the finish line?
Well, actually, that was one of the things that I had been looking at and, and for on your website. I found the previous strategic plan that was there that went through 2011, but I didn't find any information about the progress that the council or the board had made in moving forward with a next series of strategic plans. I've been involved with strategic plans since my days in the city of Greensboro, where we had a large organization trying to come up with strategic ideas on how we wanted to operate, what kind of a community we really wanted to be, and the direction we wanted to move forward in. That, once we did that, it was a great help to not only the policymakers, but also the staff in that we had a strategic vision, a direction that we could go into, where we knew that these were things that the community was interested in. It made a lot of sense in trying to move a progression of projects through the strategic plan. One of the things that I was charged with for the Department of Transportation was reporting on our improvements and how we were meeting our strategic plan. That, to me, is highly critical. Once you take the shot and actually create the plan, the most important part at that point is how you report back what moves you've made and what progress you've made to go and meet those objectives or those benchmarks that are listed out in the strategic plan. And I think reporting back and reporting back not only to management, to the board, but to the citizens, I think is highly important because that shows them what you have contributed and how you've been going about your business in trying to meet those needs or those interests of the community.
We did kind of get waylaid, that's the word of the year with the virus, but we did start it a little bit. We didn't really get to the point of any open, big meetings and getting communication done and input, resident input. We didn't really get that far, so.
And that, and that really, when you're developing the strategic plan, is, is a big part of it, is who you get involved, gain the community involved in the process, your businesses involved, reaching out to those types of people and making direct contact with people that you want to participate, that you really need to have in the process for making that strategic plan. For me, that's also the fun part of it, is that you get to have a lot of interaction with a lot of different people that you, and stakeholders, that you really should have involved in decision-making or planning activities.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Number six is Randy's.
Hi, Michael. This is Clerk Patari. What steps have you taken in your previous occupations to build an atmosphere of teamwork, especially among different departments?
Well, during my career, I've had the opportunity to be a part of a very large organization in the city of Greensboro, where we had 255,000 population, a 3,000-person workforce, 18 departments that we had to try and coordinate and work across, all the way down to smaller organizations and communities. But the, the difference between the two is very minimal when it comes to breaking down silos and being able to coordinate on various projects. That always seems to be a very big challenge. One of the areas that I've utilized quite often to try and break down those, those barriers is through... is through my department head meetings. You know, in a typical department head, you may go around the room, and they may tell you what they're doing during that week, month, whatever the case is. The key for me in breaking down those barriers, so people start talking across the table instead of just at the head of the table, is to go and get them to interact on what projects are doing and how each one of them could help the other. Quite a bit of that is building relationships between those folks. You can see connections between roads and police department, you can see connections between the fire department and, say, Parks and Rec or planning. And the key is to go and get individual department heads sitting down and talking about how one can help the other and so forth. And what that does is it brings the team together, it makes them look outside of themselves and breaks down those barriers and those silos. I've been lucky enough to have staff that have been interested and positive about doing that same thing, and had great success in breaking down barriers to the point where we've either consolidated departments or changed the operating components of departments so that they work more efficiently.
Thanks, thanks, Michael.
Okay. Number seven is Dave's question.
So, Dave Winkin, and realizing that our residents are stakeholders, stockholders, how would you keep them informed and educated and engage their input?
Well, I think nowadays, there's a lot of technology that can help you in that. Things like the internet, email, newsletters, alert systems that you can activate on various topics and things like that if they're interested. Those are all technological-type aspects that are out there that can be utilized now in a small or large community. However, the ones that I tend to utilize more often are ones that are much more personable, things that are sort of traditional, the mailings for specific activities. If there is a specific public meeting that you are having a roadway project, water sewer project, something taking place, actually having mailings or door knockers or any sort of personal contact with the citizens to get them either engaged or explain the process or the project to them, I think is very, very helpful. It gets a personal touch on it, it makes it so that the community or the residents feel like the community leaders themselves care and want their input. The downside to all that is it takes a lot of time and effort. But if the target is to go and have a good, solid base of information flowing between the council, the board, management, and the residents, then that sounds like a very positive thing to contribute your time and energy to. To me, it's all about that building relationships piece, and that's the foundation to everything else that we do in local government.
Thank you.
With some of our residents in the township, quite a few elderly, and some of them don't have internet, don't want it, don't do Facebook, they don't even have a smartphone, they have a stupid phone, and, you know, how do you do that? Just focus on the mailings part, anyway?
Mailings, contact with various organizations, having group meetings that may be sponsored by the Rotary Club, the Lions Club, the Kiwanis Club, whatever types of community clubs that are out there, places where you can go and get people to come on a regular basis and hear about what's going on in the local government itself, having small town hall meetings. You can have those during the day, sometimes those are targeted better for an elderly population. You can have some that are electronic, and those may be targeted more at a younger generation. But what you have to have is a communication plan to be able to communicate the same information to a whole host of different types of people. That's when you get the most return on your investment, in my mind.
Yeah. Okay, thanks. And last question is, why should we hire you over the other three candidates?
Well, I'm sure everybody has their own qualifications. I know from my perspective, I really want to be there. Even when I was in Menominee, my wife and I had often spoke about wanting to be a part of the Marquette area community. We had participated in many conferences and so forth that, of course, were in Marquette, that were actually in the township. And the fact that there is that recreational aspect to the community is very attractive to us. So from my perspective, I know that I would fit in well there, and I'm excited to be able to have the opportunity to be there. From a business or professional side of it, I have had twenty-four years of experience in various types of municipalities. I do keep a continual education program going. I look to always be up to speed on the latest and greatest item that is taking over. Good example of that is this COVID-nineteen crisis. The ICMA or the International City County Managers Association has had some eighteen or so different webinars where we've been able to listen to presentations dealing with everything from emergency response during a crisis like this to economic development and budgeting. Those are things that I do on my own, not necessarily in the office on a daily basis, but on my own, just to keep up the speed with what's going out there in the world and how I can go and bring those things into my daily activity to try and be a better manager. I really do enjoy the building of relationships. The type of person that I am is that if I want to understand what's going on in public works, I'll talk with the public work staff, I'll go out and do their jobs with them in the field, just so I make a personal connection and learn what they're doing and see it firsthand. Board members and councils, typically, I can do emails and other types of communications, but I'd much rather sit down with somebody and look them in the eye and face-to-face talk to them about what concerns or issues they have, or what their ideas are for making them better. So to me, that is good building of relationships. And in today's society, if you want to be able to coordinate with other jurisdictions or other groups and get a lot accomplished, that's the type of individual that you typically turn to. So those are some of the attributes that I think that I have that would be very useful to Marquette Township. Like I said, I really hope I can get there.
Hey, thanks a lot, Michael. Any follow-up questions from the board?
Oh.
Go ahead, Randy. Sorry, Randy raised his hand. Just unmute.
Sorry, John, I got the first, but.
That's okay.
Michael, how do you view like cross-training in a smaller organization like this? How do you view that? Probably in a big organization like you were at, you didn't have that issue, but, you know, we have maybe sixteen, seventeen employees here, and a lot of, you know, sometimes we need backup for our different employees.
Well, I think you're right. Virtually every organization I've been in has had some level of cross-training. I think it's highly critical that you have some way to back up your staff. I know that in my case at Carolina Beach, we had two or three people that were supervision, that may have been cross-trained to do water sewer billing receipts and things of that nature, just because we didn't have enough staff to go and always have somebody as a backup, and that we would need that backup to be one of our supervisors. I can't tell you how many times as the town manager, I sat and picked up the phone and played receptionist for all the entry calls coming into the organization, just because I knew that person was out. I think cross-training is very important. It also builds the capacity of your staff, and that in itself makes them good employees to raise up through the years and possibly move into management situations in the organization, where you're actually building their capacity to know and understand the organization as a whole and not just their little part of it. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does, Michael. Thank you.
Okay, John, you had your hand up.
Thank you. John Marks, trustee, I think you've already touched on this, but I want to share with you that our Marquette Township, our Charter Township, has been blessed with an outstanding staff leadership group. We have capable, competent people as an assessor, Department of Public Works, and our planner. Each of them are outstanding contributors to our township activity. What I'd like you to comment on is, we are interested in having staff leadership committee meetings with whoever the manager is, because I feel that these three people, three department heads, they can learn from each other and they can contribute to their overall operation of the township, and they can clearly help whoever becomes a manager. We would ask that you comment about it. I know you have already, but this gives you one more opportunity to talk about staff leadership use.
Well, one of the things that I truly enjoy in dealing with staff is having that interaction with them. By no means am I the expert in everything that goes on in municipal government. You just can't be with everything that goes on. But your department heads, like you said, in your planning or your public works departments and so forth, they're your subject matter experts. They're the ones that ought to be communicating ideas, thoughts, opinions on how to go and do things to the manager or to the management team so that we can all together decide, hey, this works well for us as a community, or this doesn't. That interaction, like you said, also is a great way to teach people how to be leaders. It brings them into thinking holistically instead of just in their little old silos. And I think that that's very important. So with my personality and my background in wanting to have good relationships with others and building those strong relationships, I think that helps build a strong team. And that honestly is part of what a manager's responsibility is, is to go and bring up the others around them and help the team grow and build for the community.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes, sir.
Pete, go ahead.
How was your relationship working with unions?
The only time that I've had an opportunity to work with unions was when I was in Menominee. Naturally, we had a police, fire, and public works union, and of course, all of the contracts came up at the same time. I was able to successfully negotiate all three of those contracts at that time, and I think one of the main reasons was because I got to know early on the union representative for that organization. I think that they're a very important stakeholder in states that have unions. You need to get to know that individual and find out what the past of the organization is from their standpoint, to be able to really build a good, solid relationship. Now, that doesn't mean that you're always going to be able to give them everything they want. I know for a fact that I wasn't able to give them huge raises that they wanted in Menominee, but I had a good enough relationship with them that when I explained why it was that we couldn't do X, Y, or Z, that they understood. They might not have liked it, but they understood. And I think that's probably the best you can expect from dealing with unions, is that they have a comprehension and understanding and respect for at least the communication you have between the organizations.
All right, thank you. Why did you want to come to the UP? I mean, you had sixteen years in Greensboro, you had, you know, different responsibilities there, now you went to Menominee, then you went back down to Carolina Beach, and now you're jumping back. Why do you want to come up here?
Well, there's a, there's a couple of reasons. Like I said before, some of them very personal, some of them that are professional. The personal ones, my daughter and granddaughter live in Okano, Wisconsin. She's five years old, our granddaughter. We FaceTime with her all the time, but that's just not the same. And I would love to be able to spend more time with her and our daughter, and being only two and a half, three hours away, that's ideal. So for us, it's more of a personal connection and trying to find the right place and the right fit for our family. I have, my wife and I are both from Flint originally. We were born and raised there, so we have family in the southern part of Michigan. My father's in Traverse City, my brother's a police officer in Flint. So we have a lot of family in the state, and that is the main reason why we went looking for a location there originally, when we transferred from Greensboro to Menominee. But like I said, the reason why we didn't stay in Menominee longer was just that difficulty of finding my wife a job. Now, in your case, in the Marquette area, that's much easier. My wife is a engineer, an environmental engineer, she does water sewer modeling. And really to be desired, you need to be in an area that has larger water and sewer capacity. And Marquette serves that purpose. There are many different jobs that are currently available for in that area. So there's some of the personal backside to it, and I know that I would, I would love to just be able to drive out, walk out my backyard and see deer and be, feel like I was in the outdoors. That is where I feel most comfortable.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And I think it could feel very comfortable in Mr. Everson's room there with all the deer heads and stones and so forth. Very nice.
All right, all right, Dan, Dan. You all say Kmart on.
Yeah, I'm also a taxidermist.
Oh, hey, there you go.
Well, that, that helps. And I got a wife that is very, very good about me displaying my animals.
Definitely a need.
And she is too. Thank you. Thank you, Michael, and thank your wife for backing you.
What other questions from the board? Anything? Any follow-ups, or?
I just had one more. Michael, what is your feeling on doing a yearly evaluation on all your, on all your employees?
I think it's a requirement. I don't think it's a nice-to-have. I think you really need to do evaluations. Typically, the way that I do evaluations is I have monthly meetings with my staff specifically on their performance and things that they want to accomplish, and whether or not they're getting there, and whether or not I can support them in any way that I can. I also think that it's very important to go and do that at least once a year with certain objectives in mind. You have to base your performance measures off of what the job description is, and whether or not that person is doing that job description or somebody else's. That kind of clues you in on what's actually taking place out in the organization. And I think it's a good opportunity for the organization to make decisions. And I think it's a good opportunity for the organization to make decisions on whether or not there's merit increases for pay or whether there's general increases across the board for pay. And those are all very important issues that I think that I've done it enough that I've gotten very comfortable with it just as a matter of fact. And I know that quite often, not every organization is like that, but if you do it right, it doesn't have to be a confrontational item. It really can be more of a team-building type item.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. How about questions for us? Any one of us? Anything from you?
Actually, I think I've done quite a bit of research and feel pretty comfortable with the community itself, the area in general, and the organization. The one thing that I really didn't find in the website or the information is number of employees associated to the organization. Now, that might have been in the budget document and I missed it, so bear with me a little bit.
Are we up to 17, 18 now, or am I thinking of my own company?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Total of 22.
Okay. That doesn't include the board. Those are actual employees.
Of course, of course.
Even though we're surrogate employees anyway.
You're the part-time employees that really aren't paid enough is typically how it works. I understand that.
Yep, some of us, yep.
You're on.
Our staff complement is 22 regular employees, but we also have between 25 and 30 volunteer firefighters.
Gotcha. All right, well, that was the only question that I had related to the position. I hope that I provided you enough information to look at me as a viable candidate for your position. I'd really like to be up there and be able to overlook Lake Superior and have a wonderful time in Marquette Township.
Great, thank you. We sure appreciate you taking your time to do this. We don't have a plan, and I don't remember if I said this to you, I've already said it at least twice, on how we're going to proceed. We expect two weeks to 30 days for the average employee to start because of their applications to their employer, if they have a current one. And we really would like to have a face-to-face, you know, maybe not shaking hands, but at least in the same room. So our thought process is kind of to have maybe one or two finalists, maybe do a second interview or narrow it down to one. It's, you know, it's kind of all up to the board, obviously, but we haven't had that discussion because it's been so segmented, everything we're trying to do, which is where we were again with the strategic plan, you know, start, stop, start and stop. So we will have a board meeting Tuesday night, a regular board meeting, and I'm sure we'll talk about it then and check our notes and see what we think the next process is. We can do some deliberating there. We could here because it is a special meeting rather than a work session, but we need to chew on this for a while and talk about it again on Tuesday. So we'll let you know, one way or the other, what happens. We just really thank you for your participation in this.
Not a problem, and thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too, Michael.
So, Clark Rattari?
I will pause the meeting or pause the thing and put the next posting up.
Okay, this is the last of four interviews for our Township Manager position. And welcome, Thomas. Do you want Tom or Thomas, which you prefer?
Tom is fine.
Okay, well, thanks for joining us. We sure appreciate it and this crazy venue here. We expect to do about an hour interview. We will ask you to share some of your information, whatever you want to share, and then we'll ask some questions of you, each board member, and then a follow-up in case there are any extra questions, and then you can ask us questions if you have any. So I am.
Certainly.
I should have introduced myself all day. I didn't do that because the board's been doing that, but thanks again for joining us. So what would you like to share about Thomas Marcus?
Well, I'm a long-term city manager. I've been in the business since 1973, over 45 years. Served a number of communities as large as 100,000 in population and as small as 5,000 in population. But Marquette Charter Township would be the largest landmass area that I would be a manager of. We currently reside in Schoolcraft County, which is south and east, obviously, of the township. And we moved up here last summer. We've owned our place here for over 10 years. We were most recently in Lawrence, Kansas, as I was the city manager there, and I resigned from that position largely to be closer to family. We have family in both Michigan and Wisconsin, and so our place here in the middle is kind of right in between both of our families with our children. And by the way, if you hear children screaming in the background today, we have been caretaking our three youngest grandchildren who are all under age four, and they're in the household here with us. Their parents are frontline personnel. My daughter-in-law is an anesthesiologist. My son's a police officer down in Milwaukee County. So they're on the front line, and to avoid having the children get any kind of contact with Open 19, we are kind of hosting our children for the time being at this time. So with that, if there's anything else you'd like to know about me, I'd be glad to tell you, but that's kind of an opening statement as to who I am.
Sure, no, that's fine. John, why don't you start us off with your questions?
We thank you. You're a city manager in Bloomfield, Brooklyn Park, and the village manager in Wheeling. It may be unfair to ask you this question, but what we'd like you to do is give us your best explanation of what you think the difference is between a state-created township in Michigan and a charter township in Michigan, if you could.
Sure. And you should understand, I have a son who works at a township down in Oakland County, Bloomfield Township, if you're familiar with that.
Yeah.
So I have, you know, I have some experience working with townships over the years. I'd say that, you know, the significant difference is with a home-rule city, I think the state laws have provided cities with a very direct, pronounced ability to self-determine the direction of the city. Now, having said that, I would say a charter township, you know, from a township standpoint, comes as close to, you know, more the idea of independence and more self-direction. And in reading your, you know, your documents that are on your website, I went through the anatomy of a township and read that pretty thoroughly. And it really grants charter townships a pretty liberal interpretation of what's allowed. Typically, other townships, non-charter townships are restricted to what is permitted under state law or what's defined under state law. Charter townships have the ability to exercise a bit more independence, quite a bit more independence, in my opinion, than a standard township as defined under state law.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, my question is that the board has adopted policy governance a few years ago, and we're looking for your understanding of it, if you have one, and how that manager position fits into it.
Well, I went through your budget documents and your audits. You have stipulated a number of policies. I'll give you an example. One is authorizing or not authorizing your manager to spend money beyond what is specifically described in your budget document, even if surplus funds exist. And so you've gone to great length in establishing policy regarding how those funds are to be spent, and quite frankly, in most circumstances, I would view that manager would be probably better served coming back to the Commission on Transfers. So you have that transfer policy established, giving your manager some authority to, you know, exercise transfers. But at the same time, I think that you set up some very strict policy guidance in terms of how those decisions would be made by the manager. So that's just one example of the policies that you have set. Policy guidance is really a mutual benefit from the administration standpoint and from the governing board standpoint, because it makes clear what the thought process is of the collective group known as the governing board. And so from that standpoint, it actually assists the manager in understanding what the concerns of the governing board would be, thus, you know, preventing the manager from misstepping beyond a comfort level that the governing board may have. So that's my understanding of the policy guidance.
Okay, that sounds good. Ernie, you have number three. Oh, but you're muted, Ernie.
You told me I'm muted, so I did it.
Yeah, keep blaming Dave.
I gotta blame somebody. Okay, my question is, what have you learned about Marquette Township? What would your recommended direction be for the rest of this year and then in general to the next five years?
I've learned quite a bit. You actually have provided a lot of your information right on your website, so I went into the documents section and started to review a number of your documents. Actually, I like to, whenever I go into a new jurisdiction, I like to go in and really look at the history of the community. And you've done a nice job by downloading your sesquicentennial history, and so I went through that and read all 80-some pages of that. And you have done a real nice job inviting a number of people from your township who have longtime roots there, talking about the businesses that were there, how different housing development occurred in your community and so forth. So I found that to be pretty interesting, and it really kind of, my view is that history, even though that history could be about 100 years old, or in your case, 150 years old, it really transfers to the current day. It helps establish kind of the values of a community in the way they think about things and how their pride is about their community, and that, quite frankly, still is the case. In fact, I'm looking at my screen right now and I see Dave Weggan, his picture on the screen, and I think his family was one of the families that was recorded in the history of the township. And so, you know, knowing those connections and having people that are so concerned, and so many of them that did report, committed to serving on the township board. One of the things I found quite interesting and different was the township kind of pre-existed a lot of the forms of government in Marquette County. In fact, I think Marquette Township was the entire county at one point in the history of the. Yeah, and so now, you know, as it split off and the city incorporated and all those changes impacted, it was pretty interesting to see how all of that evolved at the township level. The other thing I'll tell you that I did is I called Randy and had a nice conversation with your manager, and we talked about different issues that are affecting the township. I toured the city, Debbie and I, my spouse, got in the car and maintained a social distance from everybody. We actually chose not to try and contact anybody to be in contact with anybody, but we drove most of the streets in your township, took a good look at everything, the way things are laid out, had a nice tour of the, you know, your campus effect where your community center is and where your public safety facilities and the transit authority facilities. And so we got somewhat acquainted with it and saw that. I told you before that I did read the anatomy of the township, and a couple of the other things that I thought were worthwhile as I read your budget document, I read your audit. What else? The history, I told you that. The master plan, the other thing that I think is important in terms of the history is then look at where you think you're headed. For the next year, I think that we're all going to be recovering from the virus epidemic, pandemic that we've been dealing with. Some of the things that I do as a manager, I still read, ICMA has put a digest out that comes out on a daily basis, and so we have an opportunity to see what's going on around the country. And one of the things that I kind of anticipated the question about, well, how do you come out of this pandemic? And I think one of the things I read about one of my former communities that they're working on is that when people start coming back to work, they are going to be given masks to wear and probably protective gloves and so forth, and shields will be put up in terms of contact, and people's temperatures would be checked on a daily basis. And if persons showed a temperature in a dangerous range, they'd be referred to a doctor, to go see a doctor or so forth. So I think we're going to be living in this environment for some time. The other thing I would say to you is we're going to have to pay very close attention to the economic impact of how we come out of this pandemic. You've seen that at the national level where that's been a major issue. I don't think that's going to be one year. I don't think it's going to be two years. I think it is going to be multiple years. And I have a finance background, education, and one of my concerns is how we do come out of this, the predictions for, you know, an extended recessionary period or even worse. And I don't want to scare people, but I hope for the best and plan for the worst is my approach to how I look at different things. I don't want to be caught short in terms of the potential of how things could spiral in a negative way. I think when we're here in the UP, sometimes I think we are removed from, you know, bigger masses of population, and somehow we think that that may protect us, but it doesn't in this case. We're all vulnerable to this. But like social distancing, I think we have the advantage of not having the density of population. Five years, I think I'm big on strategic plans. I would like to see us, you know, keep on top of the strategic planning on a regular basis to make sure we know the direction of the governing board as well as the citizens of the community. So with that, I'll close my comments on that particular question. Multifaceted question.
Good, thank you. Number four.
All right, Pete in the room here.
Hi, Pete.
How are you?
Good.
What is your knowledge of the concept of dark stores and speak to the impact it has on our township?
Well, that's one of the things Randy and I talked about, and it was one of Randy's bigger concerns, and I think he's right to be concerned about it. I am familiar with the concept. It isn't just here in Michigan, although I think Michigan was one of the earlier places where it started to be argued. I think it's a fatal argument for local government, let me put it that way, generally, any place where a business would take that issue up and challenge the values, the property values, based on a store that's no longer in use and use that as part of their argument. I have some counters to their arguments about all of that, but we saw that being But we saw that being started in Kansas uh, when I was in the state of Kansas. Kansas legislature um, kind of addressed that and kind of stopped the, the process of the appeals there. And quite frankly, I know Menards is the store that, that was successful in their appeal. Uh, but you're vulnerable because you have other big box uh, stores uh, in the township. And I would guess that uh, they may be following Menards' lead. So I think that, that's an issue that I think really needs to be addressed at a state level uh, through the township league, through the city league, um, and through other local government agencies that we could pull together to, to maybe find some legislation that, that stop, starts to block some of that. I, I just find the argument um, uh, that, that you could value it as, as a non-operational site, what it's, what it's worth is in current, in terms of uh, how you would assess it today while it's fully operational um, to be uh, I, I, I don't understand how the decisions uh, were made in that fashion. And, and I would guess that many of you don't either. Um, but that's my understanding of dark stores. And, and I think that it's, I think it's um, I don't think it's done yet from what I understand. And, and quite frankly, you were one of the first. It's spreading in, in other locations. But we were, for the time, being able to push it back in Kansas. Do you want to follow up on?
Good for you.
Because it's not only in, you know, like it's in here, it's all over. Now, it's not just box stores. It's not Menards, Lowe's and that. Now it's going into the, like Lynn said, the hardware stores, it's going into the auto shops, it's going to the apartment complexes, going to the construction companies, it's going on and on. You know, and it's a big concern. Randy a little earlier about when I called in between here. In the paper today, we were talking about we're going to receive less revenue from the state. And now we got three or four.
Right.
File for it. And so, you know, how, how do we approach that?
Well, I, I, I think we do need to talk to our respective uh, um, local government associations to mount some sort of uh, arguments back the other direction. And we may need to hire a separate legal counsel to, to work. I, I, normally the league of cities, I know, I worked with them for over twenty years in Michigan. Um, they're usually on top of that. But this is an issue that I think everybody has struggled with across the state to try and keep on top of it. And, and Pete, I, I would be concerned not only about that issue, but the fallout from the pandemic as well. Um, you know, think about your pension system and that one of your major sources of revenue in your pension system is your uh, your earnings um, on your investments. And I would guess that, you know, you all are paying attention to what's going on with the stock market and, and everything else. And I, you know, in your audit, I looked at how your money was proportioned. Um, that could be another hit. I mean, your unfunded accrued liability for your pension system is likely to, is to rise as well, which means that the state through MERS will come back to you and ask that you make further contributions or more in contributions. So not only are your revenues, quite frankly, in jeopardy, your expenses are liable to spike in some ways too. So I think that, you know, again, you know, hope for the best and plan for the worst, right?
But you know they're going to do that because they're not going to have the, the money to fund it. So they're going to come out and want a bigger contribution from us.
Exactly right.
Thank you very much.
And in the, but, but I, I would tell you that it's not just city governments that are going to struggle, the states are too. And so we're all headed towards some very trying times. And, you know, my background is um, it, from my education standpoint, is more looking at things on a regional basis. And I know that you folks have done a lot of things on a regional basis. And I think that, quite frankly, the economy's a scale of doing things on a regional basis. They'll have to be pressed even harder going forward, even though I think you've done a pretty good job of, of regionalizing some of your facilities and services, so.
Thanks, Tom.
But it, we're all going to be challenged by that.
Yes, we are.
We actually had an open house scheduled with Senator McBroom and Representative Kim Benzi right before this hit. And that was, you know, one of the things we were going to try to push on them, or I was anyway, to where are we with this legislatively speaking? And of course, we had to cancel that. So they've agreed that they'll come back when we can do that, have another town hall.
Maybe we should do a Zoom meeting with them.
Yeah, yeah, so we don't lose touch. Yep, it'd probably be easier for them too.
Yes.
Okay.
Probably would be, they'd probably appreciate that.
Yeah. Number five is Dan's.
Yes, Tom. Um, I'm glad that you are familiar with the strategic, strategic planning. And what my question is, the board began the process of a new strategic plan. And we were waylaid by the recent coronavirus development. What steps would you take to help the board finish that plan?
Well, I think we'd, we'd get together and, and set up a schedule and, and get at it. One of the things that um, that I've done in the last two communities I've been in, in terms of strategic planning, is we scheduled it in a certain way so that um, with the, the cycle of, of elections, we made sure that we had outgoing um, elected officials and incoming elected officials um, actually join in the process. So, you know, the election's over, it's now it's time to govern, even though people may have run on differences. And I know you have seemingly not had those kind of um, more contentious election processes, at least from what I can tell of, of, of some of the history of your township. But, you know, the older commissioners that, that may decide that they're going to go off, um, they've served long enough, they've had enough time in it. And then the new commissioners coming on, they share their kind of experiences, what they heard out on the election trail with um, the experience of a long-term commissioner that decided not to uh, continue on, a board member rather. And so uh, I, I am, one of the things I think is that, that kind of tying that together, a very public process, um, doing a citizen survey is associated with, with that process. And quite frankly, we may find ourselves really challenged um, in terms of public meetings going forward. So technology is going to have to probably pay a, play a part in that. Some of it will be people that just are not going to be willing to risk. You know, um, high-risk individuals with the current um, virus um, may find it difficult to, to uh, risk going out to a public meeting. So uh, we're going to probably have to look at technology to provide some sort of uh, you know, uh, current time um, communication back to us during the strategic planning process so that we have an opportunity to, to hear from the folks as we go through it. But critically, the governing board is the, is the decision makers in terms of uh, your future direction for your community. Uh, most of you are, I'm sure, are well in touch with your public to keep the process going. Uh, but yeah, we need to, we need to jump back into it. I don't know if you were using a facilitate, facilitator to uh, process your strategic plan or not. Um, we have found that, uh, I've been in university towns, the last two places I've worked. Um, and I would bet that Marquette would have uh, uh, Northern Michigan University would have uh, persons that would be willing to assist us uh, in the facilitation process. And if not them, I would be happy to do that as well. So um, get it going and, and, and keep it moving. The other thing I tell you about uh, my experience with strategic planning is that I tend to use it both in terms of budget preparation, capital improvement programming, uh, using it in terms of priority-based budgeting approaches. And um, even to performance evaluations. Because you, once you get that plan in place, you assign your, you know, your departments uh, with some responsibilities as to how to move forward with um, the strategic plan elements. And, and you, you plug that into the goals in their performance review so that you have regular communication with them so that it isn't just a plan that goes on the shelf and nobody uh, thinks about it or gets it done. Uh, you move forward with those things um, that are laid out in the strategic plan.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks. We did have a facilitator, the first plan we put in place. And the previous supervisor actually headed up behind us at the township hall so we could check off what we had accomplished. He did an awesome job of putting it all together. And then again, we just, just barely started talking about what we thought was important going forward and then, you know, it stopped. So we kind of need to back up and start over almost.
Sure.
So six is Randy's question.
Hi Thomas, I'm Clerk Rotary. The question I have is um, what steps have you taken in your previous occupations to build a atmosphere of teamwork, especially among different departments?
Well, yeah, in every place I've worked so far, our staff meetings typically uh, follow um, the governing board meeting. So the township board meeting. So that we can uh, make sure that everything that was um, directed or established at that meeting is carried forward at that point. But in terms of team building, uh, over the years, we've done all sorts of different uh, activities with um, with our employees to try and, and generate a spree decor amongst the employees um, and departments and crossing over. We've even done some cross-training between departments just to give them exposure uh, to other departments so that they can see how those other departments work now. The last place I was, we had eight-hundred-and-some employees. And um, one of the, one of the things we ended up doing was actually consolidating our utility department, which oversaw um, uh, water and sewer and storm sewer utilities. And then all other typical public works functions, roads. They actually had storm sewers, uh, bridges, street lights, sidewalks, all of those things. So we actually consolidated those two departments. Um, but we've done some social activities. We've done newsletters in the past to keep people up to date, especially in a smaller organization such as your township. It seems that um, you know, getting to know everybody would be um, a lot easier than trying to get to know eight-hundred employees. Uh, but um, I think that, you know, being friendly, uh, being open, listening to what employees' concerns are at all levels of the um, organization, making sure that, of course, that supervisors, uh, people go through their supervisors. But, but always being open to have conversations with employees and hearing what they have to say and, and encouraging them to, you know, to be friendly to our public and uh, get out in the public and communicate with what they're working on and doing. So I, I feel like um, departments working together is, is an essential part of, of a high-functioning operation. Don't have any problem with ensuring that those types of relationships get developed.
All right, thanks Thomas.
Yeah.
Okay, number seven, Dave.
I'm realizing that our residents are stockholders and stakeholders. How would you keep them informed, educated and engage their input?
Well, I think technology is probably the way that it's going to um, be for the, the time being. And I think your website, I think that maybe, you know, some uh, and there are updates in it. I think continuing with that kind of a process, making sure that that's there. Uh, one of the things that um, I'm a big believer in is the fourth estate. And the fourth estate, of course, is, is the news media. The news media has really been challenged. Um, I go out of my way to be open and candid about what's going on in our township and trying to um, you know, let the news uh, media know on a regular basis through releases and through phone calls about what's happening in our jurisdiction to make sure that, that they know. There's, you know, generationally, we have kind of a challenge, right? Between those that still pick up a, a hard copy of a newspaper and read it and those that go right to the screen and get their news through the internet. And um, I think the community newspaper is still a very critical uh, part of, of our um, governance and the monitoring of that. And even though we, at times, that they're going to say some things that you may not like to hear, um, that's their role. And I think that's really healthy, um, that we have a media that covers us and is, and knows that we're willing to uh, be open uh, to that kind of scrutiny and opinion on occasion as to what they think about us. I think that fourth estate is really critical. Um, what we can do technology-wise um, I think is important. Um, I did a first hundred days um, in Lawrence, Kansas. Um, I don't think I saw my family for a hundred days. I mean, I was, I was going constantly uh, all the service clubs, homeowners associations, um, any opportunity I could get to get out and talk to our public so that they knew who I was and where I fit into the organization and what our organization was working on. And listening, making sure that we were listening. Um, I approach people, I approach staff uh, when they're out working just to find out what the project is that they're working on uh, in the field. I approach uh, the public. Typically, before I would have uh, gone to this interview with you folks, I would have been in your community, I would have been in your stores. Uh, I would have talked to people in the community to find out what they think of the community, what's going on in the community. Um, that's, that's kind of my typical MO as I approach a new position with a local government. And so obviously, that's not something you should be doing in a social distancing environment. And so I didn't do that. But I'm not, I'm not uh, afraid to get out and, and be in the public and, and uh, communicate uh, what's going on and, and how things are being handled in, in our, in our local government. And, and sharing that with the elected officials so they know what I hear as well. I do a, you know, typically we do a, a staff report. I see that's on your agenda where Randy reports out on things that are going on. I think that's a critical uh, communication. A lot of managers don't do that, but um, I've been doing that. And, and talking about all sorts of things. When an employee achieves an award, when something happened in, happens in the community uh, where a resident is, is recognized by some outside agency. Uh, when something happens uh, as a result of a storm condition, we had an, you know, exceptional response by our fire uh, police response. Um, all of those types of things, it's all about communication. And uh, like I said, those are just some of the ways that, that go about it. But I think we're going to have to depend more and more on technology as we go forward. Um, especially following this pandemic. I think we're going to see some permanent changes in our, our, how we live our lives going forward. So hopefully that addresses.
Thank you.
Good. We do have a good population of elderly who do not have computers, don't want them, don't do Facebook, don't have smartphones. And I have a few that call me occasionally and they'll see a newspaper article and ask me questions. That's how they find out, or a little bit from their neighbors. Um, and you probably don't know, we have a newspaper representative or reporter on right now with us. And we're very, very blessed to have that from the, from the paper, that they allow that to happen. So we can inform the public a lot faster and uh, more meticulously than just word of mouth, you know, from the neighbors. So we pretty much have done everything you've said.
It's great that you think carefully.
Uh huh.
Good, good.
Okay.
I don't think I can offer any more right now.
That's okay. My last question is, why should we hire you over the other three candidates? You are the last one too, so.
Well, I, I would just say that um, I, I don't necessarily see it entirely as a competition. I see it more as you being comfortable with the fit of who you hire as, as your manager, as a person that comes into your community to help lead the community uh, for the future. And so I would just say that, you know, I have, I have dedicated my life to this, this, this uh, service, this profession. I have spent um, over forty-five years serving numerous uh, communities in different states. The advantage to a, a place like your township is that I have a diversity of experiences. I've seen all sorts of crises. I've seen all sorts of challenges and opportunities and development and ingenuity coming from um, local government and how to get things done. And thinking outside the box, so to speak. And approaches that, you know, sometimes um, are not completely obvious. are not completely obvious. The other thing I'd tell you, despite all that experience, the culture of a community is really critical. And every community that, that I have managed has its own unique culture. And so it's the obligation of the manager to understand the culture of the community or cultures of the community in some cases, to make sure that the solutions fit not just the situation, but the culture of the, of the jurisdiction, the culture of the police, so that the people are comfortable with that. And sometimes I would tell you that, you know, managers are faced with really difficult decisions. I, I have, I have no compunction about not standing straight up and, and taking the responsibility for the recommendations I make. I don't hide behind anybody. I, I make my recommendations. And at the same time, when elected officials decide that is the direction they want to go, it's the responsibility of myself and the staff to get behind that decision. So I've had a lot of experience, a lot of years doing this. I'm still interested in it. I'm still energized by the, the profession. Public service, I think, is, is a calling to a degree as to what we do for a living. I think elected officials that give their time and service to do this are to be recognized and thanked for what they do, and that's across the country. My dad was a mayor of my hometown. I'd been in the business for twenty years and he called me up and said he was going to run for the city council of my hometown. And I encouraged him to do it. And eventually he became a city council member and then he became the mayor. And I know the hours that he spent. And I know the hours that most elected officials spend. So the, the key is not that, that I want to pit myself against your other candidates. The key is you have to select somebody that you're comfortable with. You know, I, I prefer not to see it as much as a contest as you picking the right person to fit your needs. Having said that, I want you to know I'm totally interested in your position and would give you my full attention and respect in terms of trying to do the best job I could do for you. But I'm not going to, I'm not going to say I'm better than anybody else. That's, you know, that's not my nature or what I think the process should be anyway. So the tough decision is yours. You get to make that decision. You get to decide who you're going to be comfortable with in managing your community. And, you know, that's why they pay you the big bucks for making those decisions.
Absolutely. Okay, I believe we have some follow-up questions from the board. Who wants to go first? Pete?
All righty. Tom, how do you deal with unions? What's your history on unions? And I know you have to have been dealing with unions throughout your life, Tom.
Well, my, I started dealing with unions when I was in, probably in eighth grade. My dad was the treasurer for the railroad engineers. He was a railroad engineer with the Chicago Northwestern. And I did the books for my dad with the Chicago Northwestern all those years ago. I think unions, quite frankly, they have a role in how things operate. I would tell you that, that I think that, that there's both union employees and non-union employees in our different environments. And I think that there has to be a fairness and an equity in how we deal with employees. And whether you're in the union or not in the union, I think those that are entrusted with running an organization have to understand that there is a balance to everything in life. And that means balancing resources against the demands of, of personnel or the demands of capital improvements or the demands of our citizens asking for certain things to be improved. It's all about balance. And it all is, you know, there, there has to be a relativity, you know, between what certain groups get. So I'm very fiscal, you know, conservative in terms of understanding that unions have that role. But it has to be balanced against the resources that are available. And so I've negotiated long and hard with lots of, lots of different groups. And I take, I take it very seriously. I understand probably nuances about labor agreements that longtime business agents of unions probably would be struggling with. I've had that much experience dealing with multiple unions. I've had places that have had, you know, five and six unions that we've negotiated with representing different groups of employees. So again, it's about balance and it's about fairness and equity.
I was interested when you're.
Unions have a place.
Okay. I was interested in your comment when you said you rode around our area. When, when you rode around the area, what did it say to you? What your feeling did you get from it? I ask this question to many people who come from out of town and just ask, okay, you rode through it. Now, what, what did it tell you? What did you get the feeling of?
Well, I'm kind of a student of places, local government. You know, obviously, the highway has a major impact on your community. And it, to some extent, divides the community. At the same time, it provides kind of a lifeblood in terms of commerce. Is that, that's the name of your street as well, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, it runs, yeah. And, and that, that was kind of a unique area. I hadn't anticipated seeing that. It has kind of a campus effect, which obviously somebody thought long and hard about it in the planning process. I did read the master plan that's on file. It's a draft at this point. My take on that was you're, you're pretty auto-centric, meaning, you know, it's, it's pretty automobile based development. And even your plan addresses the need and the desirability. And this isn't just Marquette Township, but across the country, to be more walkable, to be more bikeable. And your plan says that, you know, the, the current draft plan, that you have to provide more opportunities for people to be mobile rather than just getting in an automobile. Now, you have transit and all that, and you've moved to complete streets. I saw that in the plan. So you, you're approaching those things, but I think the developments, you know, some of the, the major development, I think, has been more directed towards vehicle traffic coming to the commerce rather than people being able to get to it in multi-modal approaches to it. So that's my impression. My impression is that your, your development to its advantage is pretty concentrated, which I think is a good thing, because the plan also talks about being efficient in terms of using your infrastructure. And that's how you get more mileage out of your infrastructure is that density and compacting it rather than spreading out into the hinterlands. And that, that's probably indicative of why your community is concentrated in one area and the vast majority is, is open space outside of the developed area of your community. So that's my impression. It blends pretty nicely with the city of Marquette. It's kind of an extension, the residential areas that I was, I saw. And then you have some that are a little bit more remote. You have some areas that are, are well-inseptic areas as opposed to public service areas with your water and sewer. I noted that. So I, I think you have a fairly diverse range of housing. Again, you were being, your draft plan talks about, you know, looking at affordability of housing across the spectrum. So I thought your draft plan was pretty much on target with what I saw and with where you should be heading.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, who's next? Clerk Rotary.
Hi, Thomas. We have a small organization here, twenty-two employees. And what is your feeling, and I think you touched a little bit on it before, about cross-training within your community, your departments?
I think it's, I think it's, it's a trait I carry with me wherever I go. I think the thing that, a lot of times, it's like business. Most of the new business that State of Michigan has or any other business has comes from the current businesses itself, the new development, right? That's where most of your new development actually comes from, is existing businesses. And I think with employees, when you give them the opportunity to see what else is out there, you make them more valuable by expanding their abilities and the things that they get to do, okay? And with the right attitude, they'll take those things on. With the right attitude, I, I tell people, busy is a good thing. Being busy all day is a great thing. It makes the day go faster, right? You get into all sorts of things. And I think that's one of the things, like with police departments, small police departments, they don't get the opportunity to really go beyond, you know, different features. If you get a big department, you know, you have a detective branch, you have emergency response, you have a mental health group that, that deals with things. You have foot patrols, you have bike patrols, you have all sorts of things that they can do. I think that keeps the position and the job interesting. And I think the other thing that helps is when you respond, especially in emergencies, having employees cross-trained and knowledgeable, even if they don't use the actual cross-training, but knowledgeable about what's going on in the other department is really helpful. And it really improves the communication. It re-improves the response to how things get done. And so I think it adds value to, clearly to the organization. But I think the selling point has to be made that it adds real value to the employee. It makes that employee more valuable to the organization. And so, I mean, our elected officials, I think, would, would, would support that and agree with that, that that's a really good way for employees, you know? You know, it's not my job description is something that should really be gone, okay? We've got to get over that in all of our organizations. And I think when employees realize that it's really for their best to know how to do all sorts of different things, it's much more rewarding work when they do that. So I encourage that. And, and I've had some success in getting that done.
All right. Thanks, Tom.
You bet.
Good. Thank you. Who else? Dan?
Dan has.
Yeah, I got one other question, Tom. You had mentioned performance evaluations. How important do you think they are and how often do you think they should be done?
Well, I think they should be done at least annually unless you have to, you know, what, what do we call it? We call them PIPS, Personal Improvement or Improvement in Performance, Plan for Improvement Performance. So we, once in a while, you have an employee that, you know, you need to be more specific about where they need to improve their skill set. And so on occasion, that happens more frequently when, when you have that kind of situation. But annually, I think performance evaluations are absolutely critical. And I found myself probably doing more of the performance evaluations even in a big organization. Now, a lot of the supervisors or others, because as you go down, an organization kind of spans out. And so who, who does the performance evaluation? You know, kind of gets reduced as you go down the process. Anyway, I, I like to have an engagement with the employee. It's the one time, you know, that's scheduled. And I try to be pretty social about the whole thing, you know, what's going on with them and, you know, what, what the township could do to make their jobs better. What do they see as things that we're missing? You know, how could we improve how the flow of work goes? What else could, you know, the employee, what else is the employee interested in? Are they interested in a career change within the organization? How do we do that? I don't, you know, I, I, I want our employees, like I said about business, sixty percent of the, the new development in a state comes from existing business. I think that somewhat applies to your employees too, if you can have an employee that's interested in moving up the organization. You know, find that out, train them, get them ready. That's one of the things in my later years of service that I take the most pride in is, is pulling aside younger employees and talking to them about the opportunities that exist in organization, whether it's our organization or another. Improving somebody's ability to, to perform, to do better for themselves, that should never be held back. You should, we should all be encouraging that of our employees. And so make that available to them, you know, encourage them. One of the things I would be doing is looking for employees that would be moving up in an organization and, and, and ensuring that they have the interest and making sure they have the resources to do that and kind of guiding that process. That's, that's really a rewarding part of the business.
Excellent.
Hopefully that.
Yes, excellent. Thank you.
I can't help but agree because it's exactly how I run my business. Those are the same questions I ask at my annual reviews. But anyway, who else? John, did you have a question?
Yeah, I do. This is John Marc. Trustee. You've heard a couple of times now that we are, have a small number of employees. But one thing we do have that I want to communicate is that we've been blessed with outstanding staff leadership. We have really well-qualified contributing members of our staff leadership, our assessor, our manager of public works and our planner. All have done outstanding work through the years. And we are evolving as a community. And we want to take advantage and of their input and aid them in being able to make a contribution by having them be aware of what's going on. And we think that, I think anyway, that we should encourage at least a staff meeting of those three people who can grow with their positions with greater knowledge of what's going on in the other departments and who can share with everyone else how they are operating. And we will all benefit from that. The township board, the rest of the staff and the manager, most importantly. So we just would encourage more of that if, if at all possible. And I thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree, John. I, I think that's very possible. And I think that's, quite frankly, that's my expectation that that would be going on. So I don't, I, I think your, your points are well-made and, and would encourage that sort of communication and, and, and approach across the lines. You bet.
Thank you very much.
I know, John, that we only separate our last names by one letter.
Well, I know what it is when it's M-A-R-C-U-S. I, this is, this is the first time I've seen it spelled the way that.
Yeah, M-A-R-K-U-S?
C-U-S tends to be more Grecian. But M-A-R-K-E-S tends to be more English. What M-A-R-K-U-S is beyond me.
I think it's German, I think.
Yeah, you're right. I think so too.
Yeah.
Anyway, we'll, we'll get along fine.
Hey, yes, Dan, go ahead.
I just had one other comment on a much lighter note that I know Trustee LaRue wanted to ask, but he's somewhat apprehensive to ask is how you are at playing pickleball?
You know, I gotta tell you, I've installed, I've installed more pickleball courts than I've ever played. And I've, and a lot of my friends, I play, quite frankly. We had a beautiful sports pavilion down in Lawrence, Kansas, and those, that pickleball just took off. I mean, it was really popular. I'm sure I could pick it up. I'm an old tennis player, so I'm sure I could pick it up. We can, we can resolve any disagreement. We can resolve any disagreements we have on pickleball.
Excellent.
I know you lied, Dan, because Pete's never afraid to ask a question.
I caught the pun there.
I got to say too, before I forget, that, you know, with this all about meetings and staying ahead with staff and everything, I know for a fact that Randy's walking those halls all the time, and he's got people in his office. And I just want to make sure he gets the credit for, he's doing what he should be doing. I don't want anybody to think he's not.
Oh, hell no.
Well, you wouldn't have gotten to where you are without him, so I'm sure that's the case.
Yeah.
I think your township was in good position before the virus and before dark stories.
Yeah.
We'll survive.
Yeah, you will.
Well, so, any questions for us, Tom?
Well, actually, Frank had answered one that I would have asked you about the election process. And apparently, everybody is running with one exception, and I don't know who that one exception is, I guess. Who is that for reelection?
Pete.
Pete?
Unless he signs up as an independent later, maybe.
We're working on you, Pete.
Yeah?
We need you.
I'm going to go play pickleball.
Anyway, I.
Come on.
That's good. Now, and I've heard really, Frank has done a nice job of prepping us, I'm sure all the candidates, about the position, and encouraging us to study up on the community. Like I said, I wished I could have gotten into the community a little bit more and had been on the street and talked to people. But, you know, with what's going on, I did the best I could with trying to background what's going on in your community, read the newspaper and so forth. But, you know, from my standpoint, I see this as a nice fit for where I am in my career. I answered some questions, and one of the questions was the time commitment. And I presume you read all my answers, just like you did the other candidates. Did you have any concerns about any of the responses I made to the specific questions that you raised in writing?
I think one of the board members questioned the five years that you said you would give, and I think they assumed that meant that was all you were giving. I read it to be that you'd be willing to commit at least five years. Because we kind of, some of us thought you were heading for retirement, and then why would you want to come to this little tiny community and kind of start all over? And my question to Randy was, was he going to be bored if he comes here after our experience?
I think those are really fair questions to ask. No, I don't think I would be bored. On the other hand, you know, to be candid, I think, you know, it is a smaller organization. It's kind of going back to where I started. The town I started in was my hometown. I was an intern before my dad was an elected official in that community. And I sense that this is a little bit more like that. It's the opportunity to really, you know, when you manage a community of 100,000 people with 800 employees, it's hard to sit for even a second to think. I mean, it just goes constantly. And, you know, personally, you know, I am at that stage in my life and career where I thought the pace would be a little bit more conducive to, you know, being able to chat with people and being able to spend some time to socialize. You don't really have that in the bigger communities and the demands that they have, especially when they had some financial challenges as well. So, from my standpoint, no, I don't think I'll be bored. You know, I keep myself pretty busy. And, you know, the first few years, you're getting to know everybody anyway, and making sure that, you know, you're moving in the right direction with your collective officials and the community. So, you know, no, I don't see myself getting bored. But, you know, my life is changing too, like it is for everybody. I think that there are going to be some pretty serious challenges facing government and business and all of us as citizens, and we're going to need to think those things through. So, I see that as the challenge for the foreseeable future for all of us. Frank included, he's going to be, you know, trying to figure out how to stay ahead of all this as well. So, not bored, it's just a different opportunity, but maybe a little different pace. I'd admit that, acknowledge that hopefully it's a little friendlier pace, a little more social pace than I'm used to in the last, you know, eight or nine years. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
Tom, I think it'd be just like starting over, because with the virus problems that we have, dark store issues as far as finance, that bothers me a lot. You know, it's just like, we're going to start all over. We've had good progress in the past. We fixed up the roads that the county couldn't do. We're in a good position that we had millage to cover it, and also some millage to help maintain it. We built parks. We did a lot of things, but now the finance is going to be really a crunch time, and I think that's what we really have to watch that.
Yeah, I think you're right. I can tell you, you know, when we went through the 2008 recession, those of us down in Detroit said, well, that recession actually happened about eight years before that. We were so far ahead of that curve in terms of taking action, in terms of working with our employees, that by the time that hit, we were probably one of the cities in the state that really came through it fairly well when the recession of 2008 hit. And, you know, our values, our total values declined like other places, not as severe as other places. But I think we rebounded a lot faster, because we had taken some action as to, you know, employees. We just couldn't hold on to them, but we didn't lay people off. We did it through attrition. And when you use attrition to do those sorts of things, you've got to be out in front of that a lot further than waiting until the crisis hits. Unfortunately, I think some communities waited until the crisis hit. They didn't foresee it. And that's why, you know, the kind of the motto I follow is, hope for the best and plan for the worst. It's a combination of optimism and pessimism, right? You better, you know, you better know that you can fall, so that when you do, you know how to get back up. And this is going to be one of those periods of time, in my opinion, that you just don't know what's next. And, you know, the challenge right now in our country is trying to figure out when we start up the economy again, and how that, you know, plays out, whether that works for us or not. That's a real trick. And, you know, not putting more people's lives in jeopardy and not exacerbating a problem that we already have. So, we got to collectively think about that. I do agree with, you know, a lot of the discussion is that this seemingly has kind of a regional impact. And so that, as we look at things across the country, things have hit at different times. And so, we may be able to move back into things on a regional basis a little bit quicker. But I would also say, go ahead.
Tom, I don't believe that, being in the U.P. here, that, you know, everyone's getting money for this money. I don't think we're going to see that money up here as far as helping bail people out. The gas tax well back is, it's, oh, we're going to get the gas tax. Well, I checked on it, and the guy said, oh, no, you're not going to get that for three years. For three years, we got to pay off the debt, so you won't be getting any money. So, it just, you know, we're not going to see a bailout. So, we have to be planned for in the future.
So, is the gas?
Go ahead.
You remind me, is the gas tax per gallon, or is the gas tax on the price of the gas?
I believe it's price on per gallon.
So, is it a percentage on the price? Because think about that, your prices have just dropped, or.
Exactly.
Quite frankly, your prices haven't dropped as fast as they should. It's going per gallon?
Yeah, it's 19 cents per gallon.
Okay, well, then you're okay there.
But we're still not going to see it for a while.
Because some places go to a sales tax on gas, so it's on the price.
Right.
Yeah, I think the problem Pete's trying to speak to basically is that the road commission, which is our road body, basically, they own all the roads in the township. Their primary funding is the gas tax. And as we're spending buying fewer gallons, their revenue decreases.
Yeah, well, that's the flip there then, right? It's, you're going to see decline revenues there. And, you know, if we go back through a housing problem with values, you know, your property taxes are going to be impacted as well. So, we all have challenges, don't we?
Thomas, thank you for your time. It's been a pleasure to meet you.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure talking with you folks. I wish you all the best in this process, and I want to say thank you for the opportunity to, you know, present myself and my credentials for your consideration. You have a nice township, you do. And the thing about all local government is, it's the persons that live there and the persons that serve there, including the electeds, that make the big difference. And Frank has been very clear about how you folks get along at a time when that's not the standard fare, quite frankly, across the country. Governing boards are, you know, all you have to do is pick up the paper and look at the Youtubes. I mean, governing boards are going at each other all the time. And you folks have figured out how to remain civil and get the job done. And quite frankly, that shows a lot of respect for each other and your community. And that is the right way to do things. So, whether I'm your candidate or somebody else is, keep doing what you're doing, because you're making a good impression on outsiders, okay? And setting in good standard for how to get things done. Good luck to you.
Thanks for that observation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have expected that people, the applicants, would have to give at least two weeks' notice, maybe a month at their current position. So, that's kind of our timeframe. We will have a board meeting Tuesday night next week, and chew on this. So, I don't know how quickly you can come or not come, or, you know. We're not sure if we're going to pull one or two out and ask them for another interview, or if everybody's made up their mind, or if we want to try to do a face-to-face. A few board members were kind of hoping we could have something in the community room or the boardroom and spread out and talk face-to-face. I don't know if that's important or necessary, or if it's a great idea. So, we'll chew on it Tuesday night, and we will definitely let everybody know what our direction is going to be. So, we will contact you somehow.
That's fine. I would just say that, as you know, I'm not currently employed, but I am employed by my family right now, taking care of these kids. And I'm not going to leave my spouse to that alone. You can imagine, three kids under the age of four would not be, would not be good for the home environment if I did that at this point.
Yeah.
That kind of determines, actually, that both of my son and daughter-in-law are quite busy on the front line down in Milwaukee County. And so, you know, it depends in large degree how long we'll be expected to give care to these kids. I, you know, I have my ups and downs in that. Yesterday, I was unplugging one of our septic lines, something got flushed down there. The day before, I was, I took the frame off the door so I could get it unlocked, get back in the children's bedroom. So, they've been keeping us busy.
You might be bored with us, you never know.
Sounds very familiar.
Do those things anyway.
Great experience.
So, it was enjoyable talking with you folks.
Okay, we sure appreciate your time and that you took an interest in us.
Yeah, it's a good community, and I'm sure Frank has put a good list of candidates together for you. So, I hope that's, I hope it's a difficult choice for you, because that will speak to the quality of your candidates. So, good luck.
Yep. Okay, sir. I think we can.
Take care.
Wrap it up. Clerk Kritari?
Yeah, let's see here, where do I got it? Yes, the only thing is, I don't have any other public comment on the email, so we can go past that. And it'd be a board member comment meeting wrap-up, so I guess if any board members have any comment.
Anything from our board?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, go ahead, Dave.
I guess I'd like to encourage that we move this along a little quicker and maybe have a work session Thursday or Friday, so we can address it a little better at the board meeting.
Consensus? What do you think, gang?
Fine with me.
Yeah, whatever, whatever is going to move it along the effective.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it. Just got to let me know a time, and we can make a motion to do that.
You actually want a special meeting, so we can make a motion there, or would you rather?
Do a work session, so we can just talk about it openly. And then, if we're going to make a motion, we could do that at the board meeting.
That's fine. I just got to have the time and date. We have to make a motion in this meeting.
Right.
Have the work session.
One o'clock Thursday works for me, so everybody else weigh in.
Works for me.
Rest of us are.
Yeah, that's perfect for me.
One o'clock Thursday?
Right.
30th?
Yeah, I can put it on Zoom, send you the information. So, I'll move to schedule a work session to discuss the applicants for the township manager.
Support.
You going to say something, Pete?
I just said I'll second, but Dan got it.
Okay, go ahead with the roll call.
Clerk Kritari is yes, trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yeah.
Trustee Leroux?
Yes.
Treasurer Johnson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries, seven zero.
Okay, thanks for that, Dave. Usually when I push you guys to work sessions, you kind of scowl.
There's not very many places we can go.
I got, I should really get you while I can, hey?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, then the next part is the review of motions, past or action items. And I only have two, which was to approve the agenda for today. That was carried seven zero. And the last motion, which was to schedule a work session Thursday, April 30th at 1:00 p.m. to discuss the manager candidates.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Frank, looks like he wants to speak.
Oh, absolutely, Frank.
Thank you.
Even though we have a motion, we don't have a second anyway. Go ahead.
Okay, so, first of all, let me say, I sat through a lot of these. And when I say a lot, that's a capital L. And part of getting a, securing a new manager is it's important on both ends. You know, we all think that there are, when we interview candidates, we all think, oh, they're dying to come to our community, they just can't wait. Part of it, 50% of it, is you're representing yourself well enough to attract the candidate to want to come here, and this is their first experience. You did a marvelous job today, really, really well. I was really impressed with Supervisor Durant's, making people feel comfortable right off the bat. And all seven of you just really, really reeled in. If you're going on a fishing trip, you reeled in the fish today. Whoever that fish is for you, you did a great job of completing that, making them want to come to your community. So, and I was really impressed with the candidates. You've got a really good crop here, and I wish you well with your decision. Would you like me to tune in on Thursday to listen in on your conversations?
Sure, it's a public meeting anyway.
All right, I'll do that. But again, you really did a nice job today with all four.
Thank you. We appreciate you being involved with all of this and helping us out.
I just want to see Frank's face, so I can know what he's thinking, that's all.
Hey.
This is easier, yeah.
I will move to adjourn then.
Support.
Support.
Okay, roll call.
Clerk Kritari is yes, trustee Iverson?
Yes.
Trustee Marks?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Larue?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand? Oh, okay, no.
No one.
Treasure Johnson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Durant?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Or 45.
Frank, are you still recording?